Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the first meeting of the brand-new school year for the Lake County School Board this Monday, January 9th, 2017. Before we begin, if we would first start with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in law, one nation under America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, Happy New Year, everybody. Certainly, I know that we're eager to get started on conducting the School Board's business for the 2017 year. And with that, Dr. Moxley, you've got somebody special to introduce.
I do. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our School Board meeting this evening. And it is with great honor that I introduce our student representative for this month in January, Mr. Mathias. I think you do the honors today. And I'm going to invite Caitlin Hernandez to please come forward and join us up here at the dais. Caitlin is a senior at Southlake High School. She is currently the school's valedictorian with a 5.22 GPA. She serves as the president of the Environmental Club and historian of National Honor Society. She's a very avid member of the Southlake FFA chapter. Not only does she serve as the vice president, but also competes on a variety of career development teams. She achieved first place in state as novice parliamentary procedure, as well as ornamental, horticulture demonstrations. She spent this past summer at the American Legion's Girls State, where she served as a member of the Senate and was elected as outstanding senior. Caitlin, in addition to having a very rigorous curriculum and coursework, she has done many community and extracurricular activities with leadership roles. She has many curricular clubs that she participates in, cheerleading, tennis, FFA, student government, National Honor Society interact, mathletics, volunteer cheer coaching, assistant teaching for the middle school, an ag. She's been at the Lake County Fair, Model, United Nations, Teen Court, and many others, and certainly many leadership positions that she holds. I'd also like to introduce her mother, Mrs. Hernandez. We thank you for being here and thank you for partnering with us. We know that you support Caitlin's academic program, and she has excelled. And so, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Benson, her proud principal is also in the audience with us tonight. So, thank you very much for being here and the opportunities that you provide the students at Southlake High School. So, welcome, Caitlin. We're glad to have you here, and we look forward to your report a little later in our agenda. District highlights? We do have a few. So, we want to wish everyone a Happy New Year to all our students, staff, and families. I hope you had a wonderful time to get some well-rested, quality time with your families over the holiday break. So, welcome back. We're looking forward to an exciting second semester. It was nice to have this semester done before the winter break and then to come back and start fresh. We had a wonderful professional development day for our teachers and many of the schools, and I'll talk about a few of those in my report later on. I'd like to share some exciting news. I received an email from the Department of Education about Eustace Heights Elementary School. They entered the Celebrate Literacy Week statewide service project contest. And for the second year in a row now, they have been identified as being in the top three elementary schools statewide. And so, they will actually travel on Thursday, January 26th, to Tallahassee with their group. And at that point in time, the awards ceremony, they will hear who's the first, second, and third-place winners. And last year, they were in third place, and this year, we're hoping that they go and get first place. There is some monetary awards. Third place is a $250 award, second is 500. And certainly, the overall first place is a $1,000 prize. And last year, they actually invited the first-place winners to the governor's mansion. And so, our First Lady Scott is there. So, it's very exciting for them. So, last year, they teamed up with members of the community to create the alphabet book about the community. So, this year, as part of their Stuff the Bus project, Eustace Heights collected thousands of new or gently-used books, and they deliver them to the community. They're going to be doing that project later this week, or later this month. So, we're very excited about that. So, congratulations to Eustace Heights. I also would like to say thank you to a very special group of men who have volunteered to serve as mentors to boys at Leesburg Elementary School. Principal Heather Galb and Assistant Principal Mari Simmons started the Boys to Men Program at the beginning of the year, and every Wednesday, men from the community, including some within our district, like our chief academic officer, Bill Miller. He is part of that group, and they team up with the young men at Beverly Shores, and they do conflict resolution. They talk about the importance of education. They talk about leadership, role modeling, engaging in safety with law enforcement. And they support them in immeasurable ways so that students can experience success, both in the classroom and outside in the community. And so, we really want to thank all those community leaders and gentlemen that come and serve as role models. I'd also like to congratulate Clarice Casio of Leesburg High School. She won a $4,000 scholarship from the Martin Luther King Commemorative Committee at The Villages for an essay she wrote about Dr. King's letter from the Birmingham jail. We're very proud of her accomplishments. A $4,000 scholarship is nothing to sneeze at, and we're very proud of her accomplishments. And I know she will put that to good use. We have many, many students that are participating by submitting entries into the literary contest sponsored by the Martin Luther King Commemorative Committee. And that's this next coming Friday night. So, we look forward, actually, it's next Friday night. We look forward to that. And then, our schools will be closed on Monday, January 16th. So, those are a few highlights. I have one other recognition I'd like to make. A young man, I had the opportunity, and it was just a real pleasure yesterday afternoon, to attend Joshua Patterson, who is a sophomore at Umatilla High School. He obtained his rank of Eagle Scout from Troop 113 in Wearsdale. And so, I was up there at the Presbyterian Church with many, many, many people. The church was full. To watch this young man in his court of honor be recognized. And I don't know how many people know all about the Eagle Scout, but you must have 24 badges and some other criteria, Mr. Dodd. I know you've been very active in Boy Scouts. This young man had 33 badges. And his service project, he had gotten a lot of donations to do as service project. And he did it for a third of the money, returned the money back to the organization, and actually ended up doing about $7,000 worth of improvements to a cemetery in the community by cleaning it up. And just what a young man that has accomplished so many things. And he is representative of many of our students, but as you all know, only about 4% of the young men go into scouting, and then about 4% of the ones who do actually earn Eagle Scouts. So, it was quite an accomplishment. And he didn't just meet the criteria, he well exceeded it. So, it was just a real treat as superintendent to be there and honor one of our students in that way. So, those are just a few highlights for tonight.
Very good, and certainly a lot of great ones to share. Do we have any changes, amendments, or additions or deletions to tonight's agenda?
I have none to pull, but I know we have several public input cards. And I believe 8.07 has been asked to be pulled for public input. 8.08 has been asked to be pulled for public input. 10.12 has been asked for public input. And then, there's one on the consent agenda, but those are all handled separately.
Discussion agenda?
Discussion.
11.03, right. So, we'll pull that out automatically. Well, it's already pulled because it's--
Yes, it's automatically pulled.
Sure. It's--
8.07, meaning we'll pull it for separate consideration, and there will be discussion. 8.08 and 10.12.
All right. Board members, did you have any other items to pull tonight for discussion?
I'd like to pull 9.05.
9.05.
Okay.
All right. Any others? All right.
Okay, great.
And that brings us to the approval of some minutes.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to recommend approval of the minutes from the special School Board meeting of December 5th, 2016, regular School Board meeting, December 12th, 2016, executive session for collective bargaining on December 12th, 2016, executive session for litigation on December 12th, 2016, and special School Board meeting interview with superintendent candidates of December 13th, 2016, all presented in board docs.
Any further recommendation from the superintendent? Any motions?
Some motion.
Motion by Bill. Any seconds?
Second.
Second by Stephanie. Any discussion on those?
Just a clarification. On the executive session, I ask this question, being a newbie. Why do we have that on this? And it's because just to show reflection that we did have one, even though there are no minutes. So, being a newbie, I learned something just--
That's right.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, all those in favor of approving those, say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. All right, that carries 5-0. And that brings us to some public input tonight. First up is Lori Baxley.
I just have some generalized comments on the consent agenda. And I do have a concern about what appears to be a lack of transparency on some items. There are multiple consent items that have not been workshopped that I believe should be. And please know that, to Joe Public, these contracts appear to be snuck in without any open discussion, and frankly, perception is reality. So, there's no documented proof or reasoning or explanation as to why some of these contracts are the best for the county. When it comes to fiscal decisions, the Board should publicly justify their vote. And this can be done by sharing as to how they came to their conclusion, whether it be through a bidding process, researching other counties, or other companies. So, as Ms. Carnegie has mentioned, just explaining the why. So, I suggest that no contract should be on the consent agenda without being workshopped. Contracts should be presented at least two months before they expire. And also, any new contracts at this time should be short-term so that our new superintendent has some input on the future of the district. I believe many of the issues the public brings forward to this forum could be easily alleviated just by simply tweaking some of the district's communication processes. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The other cards that I have are specific to one of the items that we've pulled, so we'll certainly give those folks the opportunity to address those items as they-- But I see one more card there. I'm not sure--
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Several consent items. Mr. Yocum, would you like to address? I'm not sure specifically which items you'd like to address.
Yeah, actually, Vance Yocum, write the blog FiscalRangers.com. I just, I should have probably disclosed which items I was going to talk about so that they could be polled. So, you've already voted on some that I wanted to bring up.
No, we haven't voted on any yet. Just the minutes.
Okay, well, that's true. Okay.
Well-- You can still pull if you bring something of concern.
All right. The first one is item 8.06, and that was renewing an investment advisory services firm's contract. It says $15,000, and then you go into it and you find it's a five-year extension of this contract. There aren't, I did not find any performance incentives required in the contract. And it kind of bothers me that you're going to be holding a new superintendent responsible for, among other things, investment performance, and yet, you're locking up an advisor for five years in this contract, and I think it ought to be put off for probably at least six months. Maybe, it's already expired, by the way, last month, so it should have been on your Board agenda two months ago, as was just recommended. But I think that you ought to extend it no longer than six months and allow the new superintendent and staff, the new CFO, because you're going to be getting a new one to have input, and maybe to set some performance criteria with incentives for investment performance. Next is the item 10.05, 10.06. You're sending the same person to San Diego and then Boston for avid training. Now, I understand that it's required and that you need to have somebody training, but I would like to see some discussion of, are there other closer alternatives? Because I've worked in Fortune 500 companies. We wouldn't send people across the country for something when there might be a regional-- We'd at least ask the question, is there a regional training opportunity available? And that's my point. And probably, you ought to have a policy on that. Next is the item 10.11 and 10.12. Dr. Moxley is scheduled to go on two trips, one in New York and one to San Francisco. And I question why this would be taking place just before she's going to be transferring responsibility to the new superintendent in March. And I think that maybe that, to me, and as was mentioned earlier, the public might question why, in any company or organization, why you'd be sending someone who is leaving the organization to something like that. The legislative liaison process, I'd just like to mention that it's on the agenda, item 11.07. There's nothing there. You don't know what you're going to be discussing. Now, I'm assuming that you're going to be discussing the, maybe hiring the lobbyists the county's using, but that should have been disclosed. And I think probably that might be a good idea, since, again, this is a very late request. It should have been in the pipeline two months ago. And then, you could have had a proper procurement process for that. But I think a lot of us support that. And by the way, I just put this book down here because I must have 20 of them, but you know, I can only find one on how to turn around school districts. And I'm going to start sharing some things about what's done in the corporate world for turning around operations, just in case, you know, there's a new direction. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments.
Mark, I can pull 8.06.
8.06?
Just for discussion.
Sure. We can go ahead and pull 8.06 aside for discussion. I think 10.11 and 10.12 are kind of probably in the same kind of category. It's probably, I think, the person who submitted a card about 10.12 would probably have the same question on 10.11, which will, I think, provide you a good opportunity--
That's fine.
--to provide an explanation. So, we'll do that one. All right. With that, we'll move into some reports, and we have somebody very special to welcome. Dr. Moxley gave you quite a warm welcome introduction. So, Caitlin Hernandez, welcome aboard.
Thank you. So, I'm just going to say the report on Southlake High School. Our school has recently gotten a lot of new administration, and with that, we've also added some more clubs. This past year, we introduced the Environmental Club, actually. And not only that, our currently standing clubs have been expanding. Our Southlake FFA chapter recently traveled to Nationals in Indianapolis this past October, and we placed silver in national ag sales and services. And for our chapter now, we're looking for it's to districts for parliamentary procedure and states for the food science competition. This school's Environmental Club is trying to pioneer a recycling campaign and train for the Envirathon in the spring. And the NJROTC unit is gearing up for competition, which will take place in two weeks. Currently, it's done some school-wide competitions just to get geared up for it. The Screaming Gold Band Regiment received straight superiors at competition, and in terms of performing arts programs, our chorus program not only was able to perform at Disney yet again for the candlelight performance, but also on Channel 9 on Christmas Day. The golf team has actually really thrived again this year, with both the boys' and girls' teams making it to states and winning districts for two consecutive years. Our cross-country team has gained more members, allowing our girls' team to actually qualify for team competitions, and we've had three runners qualify for the regional competition this past year. Other than the plethora of extracurriculars Southlake's received, we've had a lot of new administration, which has resulted in fewer disciplinary infractions and a much more organized campus.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing all the highlights of Southlake High School, and congratulations to you and all the accomplishments that were mentioned earlier.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, I think I saw Carmen Cullen-Batt in the audience to share with us about the Educational Foundation.
So, did you get your card?
You did? Yes, yes, I have your card, but it was specific to some certain items, so we've pulled those. And we'll give you an opportunity to speak before we address those. Is that good?
Want to speak later?
Yes, yes, yes. We've pulled that aside off the consent agenda, and so, we'll give you an opportunity to speak specific to that item, and then we'll discuss it as a board. You bet. And now, I think there were a couple other cards that fell into that category, too. So, if you hadn't been called for public speaking yet, that's why. Thank you.
I'm up.
You're up.
Chairman Dodd, School Board member, Superintendent Moxley. Happy New Year. The foundation is absolutely thrilled to start off our year being named eighth in the nation for an education foundation in our size. And so, that gives us a lot of renewed vigor and energy to set goals to become number one. So, we're off to a running start. Apple Mart has had 411 teachers' visits, and that equates to 31,200 in supplies distributed to our teachers. Books-A-Million held a book drive for the foundation, and we picked up 15 boxes of books today, and they'll be distributed through Apple Mart. Jenkins Auto Group held a toy drive for our homeless students and brought in 180 presents and two bikes, and those were distributed through Student Services before the school went out in December. We also received an AT&amp;T grant in the amount of $2,000, and it will be funding a STEM project at Umatilla Elementary School. Our high school high-tech program, we receive $22,000 a year from Able Trust, is under, just running like crazy. We're real excited. We have 16 students at Leesburg High School, and this program works with students with disabilities to become career and college-ready. So, we have campus trips planned for them, as well as internships. The Jacobson Foundation awarded us $10,000 for our unlocked initiative that we rolled out back in the fall. So, we were able to add another project to be funded, which is the Black Box Project at Mount Dorum Middle School. They also awarded us $5,800 to complete the laundry initiative at Triangle in Eustace Heights. Our social workers have taken two schools, and they're making them test sites, and they're installing washers and dryers. And while our families are there utilizing those services, they'll be providing tutoring services for those students. So, we're real excited about the outcome of those two test sites, and so, it is fully funded now. Our P3 initiative, which is the Gates Initiative for Teacher Leadership, is being implemented under the direction of Laura Woodward at Leesburg High School, or, excuse me, Leesburg Elementary School. There, we received 2,500 in the first round of funding, and based on the outcomes, there is about another $60,000 at the state level that we can apply for, for teacher leadership. As you're aware, I serve as the president for the consortiums in the state of Florida. And unfortunately, we've got some really bad news from our legislative advisors the past couple of weeks, and that with the changes in the House with non-recurring dollars, we're probably poised to lose about a half a million dollars. We are strategically looking at some other ways that we can recoup and light items that are not showing up as non-recurring dollars. But at this point, it's probably going to mean a $10,000 loss to Lake County. We are going to be announcing very, very soon the finalist for our Teacher of the Year. The event, which is hosted by Duke Energy, will be held on Saturday, February 11th, and our winner will be driving home that night in a car from Jenkins Auto, and it is a Honda Civic EXT. We're also in the process of selecting the Rookie Teacher of the Year finalist, as well as kicking off our duck race sales. And the duck race will be held on March 4th in Wooton Park. Take Stock in Children has received 16,000 last month through their scholarship accounts from Lake County and from the Orville Trust. And we're also in the process, we have all of the applications in-house. They have been scored by our readers, and we're in the process of setting up interviews. We should be awarding around 50 scholarships in April to our eighth-grade entering ninth grade students. And that will put almost 900 kids in that pipeline somewhere between eighth grade and having a doctorate. The next executive conference call is January 18th at 4:00 p.m. And the next meeting is January 25th in the district office at noon in Conference Room A. And at that time, we'll be installing Greg Collier as a new board member. He owns Collier Financial Solutions, as well as being affiliated with Raymond James. And also, Sheriff Grinnell will be joining our board and replacing Sheriff Borders. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just like to say, Carmen, we thank you for what you did at our holiday festivities that you provided through the Educational Foundation. I know you were not able to be there, but we appreciate it very strongly.
Thank you. We enjoy--
Doug Majors and your team did a fantastic job.
Thank you. I'll let him know.
And to piggyback on that, thank you also for the efforts when we brought all the superintendent candidates to town. You all were nice to put together some receptions for those events.
Anytime we can help.
Appreciate that so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, our attorney report.
Yes, sir. One thing on the proposed ordinance amendment that's going to be presented to the County Commission tomorrow. I had sent around the change, I think, in a memo. Mr. Fix, I believe, is going to update his recommendation on what, on the Board's direction. But I think I wanted to get your opinions about whether you wanted to either have any language in addition approving what they're going to do or disapproving it. Just for information, Chapter 22 of the Board of County Commissioner ordinances is the chapter dealing with impact fees. It sets out in the first few sections up to about Section 22-11, which is the section being, one of the two sections being amended. It sets out different methodologies of how to pay impact fees, not just school impact fees, but all impact fees in general. 22-8, which is, it's just titled Payment and Use of Impact Fees, identify that impact fees for residential land use would be paid with the issuance of the certificate of occupancy or until 12 months from the issuance of the building permit, whichever comes first. It had language in it, and it had before-now language in it that the impact fees could be potentially waived or deferred. The new language that's being added to 22-8 by the County Commission is that nothing herein shall prohibit the Board of County Commissioners from entering into impact fee deferral agreements so long as appropriate security for the payment of the impact fees is provided. And then, it tells you what its security is. More importantly, on 22-11, where there was a provision for prepaid impact fees, which essentially gave a builder 12 months to build and to get a permit issued, and during that 12 months, they continue to be eligible to receive the impact fee at the time of the deferral. So, there was a different impact fee three years ago. So, whatever that impact fee, some individuals were able to obtain that and get a deferral of paying the impact fee based upon the impact fee that existed at the time. A case in point is, I assume, the project that brought this to the County Commission's attention, and that was on their, it's on their agenda tomorrow, that on April 3rd, 2015, developer of Atwater Apartments arranged a prepaid their educational impact fees on a 240 multifamily project. That payment was $370,860. If they didn't obtain the building permit prior to the expiration of the prepayment certificate, those school, those impact fees, educational impact fees, become $1,559,000. What the amendment to the ordinance will do is allow an extension of the prepayment certificate for at least another year, which means for the additional year, the developer will have a, the fee of $370,000 instead of the $1.5 million. I assume this is, the ordinance is going to pass because it has in the agenda item for tomorrow that Section 22-11, 5, is recently amended by the Board of County Commissioners. So, I'm assuming the idea is they amend the ordinance and then provide an extension of the prepayment. Staff had indicated that, in a memo that I forwarded on to the county attorney, that they don't object to the proposed new language, but there's no limitation for the certificate holder. It says it's going to be amended for, and it has to be completed in 12 months, but that doesn't mean, doesn't say that you can't go back and get another 12 months. So, I think Mr. Fix was going to be there tomorrow to reiterate to them that, you know, we understand what you're doing here with the prepayment, but we think it needs to have a limitation if you're going to allow that to happen. a limitation if you're going to allow that to happen, that you should not allow it to happen more than once. Now, there are conditions. It's not just blanket, it has a condition that they have in good faith continued to attempt to complete the development and to obtain the building permit and that they haven't received the building permit for reasons outside their control. So it's not just they can wait around forever, they have to move forward, but for now, the intention was to advise them that we wanted some definitive limitation on one prepayment extension and then after that, regardless of whether they were trying hard or not, that the new impact fee was going to kick in. Does anyone want to include any other comment or request any other different action from the County Commission on that item? Nope?
Okay. So recommend the staff's recommendation on that one to create a limit.
Okay. That's all I have.
Right. Without, and I think we come to our consent agenda, minus a few items.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to recommend approval of the Consent Agenda Item eight-point-oh-one through eight-point-oh-five, eight-point-oh-nine and eight-point-ten, nine-point-oh-one through nine-point-oh-four, ten-point-oh-one through ten-point-ten, ten-point-thirteen, with the following items being pulled for separate consideration, eight-point-oh-six, eight-point-oh-seven, eight-point-oh-eight, nine-point-oh-five, ten-point-eleven and ten-point-twelve.
Uh, ten-point-thirteen was pulled.
Ten-point-thirteen?
I don't have that as pulled.
Oh, wait, no, it wasn't, sorry, I just circled it.
Okay. All right. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, any motions?
So moved.
Motion by Bill, second by Sandy. Any objections? All right, then all those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda as recommended, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. And that carries five-zero. All right, so that brings us to a few items for separate consideration, the first being eight-point-oh-six.
Yes, and I believe Mrs. Burns, Dr. Burns, pulled this one. I am going to ask Carol McLeod to come to the podium in case she needs to answer any questions on this. I do have one comment to just share some information, just some factual information. PFM is, yes, the management company that we have used in the past. Remember that they are the group that has worked with us and did all the refinancing that saved us all the millions of dollars that we have done, so that speaks to their performance. In all our contracts, many times, we do a one, two, three, four, five-year to lock in the price and the cost, so it doesn't go up. However, every one of our contracts, because it's required and we've worked with Mr. Johnson on that language, has what we call the thirty-day clause, meaning regardless of the length of the time, there is always a thirty-day clause that allows you as a board or as superintendent to bring it to the board to cancel any agreement. So in essence, while it does have a five-year time limit on it, it really is not a five-year contract in the fact that you always have that thirty-day notification to, to cancel it. So I give you that information and I wanted to turn it over to Dr. Burns.
Yes, I'm just, I pulled this for transparency. I had spoke with Ms. McLeod already about this issue because, well, for one, at the time that I had printed it out, it didn't have a contract with it and so I thought there was a conflict between the contract and the, and the agenda, which there is, there isn't a conflict because the contract is for twenty-five thousand and the agenda shows a number of fifteen thousand, but that fifteen thousand is less ten thousand of interest, which was last year. So that explained it to me. This is a service where we get the money from the state and we have short-term investment of our money from the state and then we basically make interest on our money as it's invested by PFM. So the sort of questions I asked Carol were, why this company? And she told me because there's two, pretty much, that do educational work of this sort and the other one doesn't really have the services that we need. What else, maybe, Carol, what else did I ask you?
Thank you, Dr. Burns, board. PFM, actually, there's two companies. We do business with both. This is for the investment advisory, we also have them as our financial advisors. You're familiar with Jay Glover, he has come in and done all of our bond refundings to the tune of over twenty million dollars that we've reduced our interest. This is our investment advisors and the board has a very lengthy investment policy that's required under Section two-eighteen. What we're allowed to invest in is very limited and very specific because it is public funds and the safety is, is the highest importance. Investment return is the second highest. We're not going to make risky investments with public funds, so they are very limited in what they're allowed to do. The ratings of the paper that we invest in are spelled out in your own policy that we work with. The, if you'll, through the contract, you'll see that the more we have invested, the lower the, the amount that we pay them. In recent years, where that fifteen thousand came from, is in recent years, the interest has been so horrible that we really haven't made anything in years past and in, as we're seeing already, that the interest rates are starting to rise, while that's bad on one side of the house, it means the investment side of the house, it's a good thing, we'll earn more and it'll offset. So while that we're showing you that as a potential and an estimated cost per year as the interest rates rise, that actually will be no cost to the district because it will be offset by, we won't be paying it directly. Right now, we have paid directly because they've exceeded in different instances. But there are, there are probably three companies, maybe. This is also a professional service that we're not required to bid. PFM has been with this district long before I got here and we have just done business with them, they have been, this contract did expire in December. We had a few other things going on and I didn't get it on the agenda and it, so we've just brought it back and we actually have the financial advisor one we'll bring back probably next month.
Can I answer all your questions?
Yes.
All right. Recommendation?
Yes, I'd like to recommend that the board approve the contract for investment advisory services with PFM Asset Management LLC as presented in board docs.
Superintendent has recommended approval of eight-point-oh-six. Motion by?
First, motion first.
Oh, all right, by Christie, second by Bill. Any other discussion or questions about this? All right, now we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That carries five-zero. The next one is eight-point-oh-seven, which there is a public input card on Caroline Van I know you also want to speak about eight-point-oh-eight.
Do you want to do that now? You want me to, I could kind of break it up. I didn't come prepared that way, I forgot.
Are you two minutes on each?
Yeah, I forgot that you have to speak to separate ones. Okay, so which one are we on?
All right, so eight-point-oh-seven is the, the modular buildings.
Okay. All right, so I asked you to pull this item, it's the one-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand stem portable for Cypress Ridge Elementary. Every school in Lake County would love to have a STEM academy. Some schools have raised or are in the process of raising their own money to create a STEM lab. They've already carved out spaces for the lab somewhere in their school. My concern is the money. We've been, we are using capital funds to pay for something that's not a need, it's a want. Right now in Lake County, we have so many schools that have basic needs. For example, did you know that Treadway Elementary has been asking for covered walkways for over five years now and they've been denied because they're in the long-range plan for a new building? Right now, Treadway is not even in the current five-year plan. When it rains, the children have to be moved from the portables to a building that has covered walkways in order for them to move to specials and to eat without getting wet. This means overcrowded rooms with multiple teachers attempting to teach at the same time. Just today, the heat went out in the portables and all the kids were moved again. Do we really have a spare one-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars sitting around for a want? This is just one example of many needs that each of our schools have in this county. Please reach out to the principals in your districts. I know several schools that can give you an earful about sewage problems. First, we take care of our needs and then our wants. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Sure. Board, and, and I know that the board members that have been on the board before this past election, we have had some discussions about the Cypress Ridge STEM program and Mr. Delpit is in the audience here, so certainly he can, he can speak to it. But if you'll remember, this topic came up, Mr. Delpit did come before the board, it's been many, many months ago. We have been talking about this for a long time and Mr. Delpit and Cypress Ridge, they had written and got, received a grant and they built these science kits and they, the ideal was to set up a mini Orlando Science Center, if you will, which was very hands-on, so there were stations, they were mobile. The, the request came then is to have a location where other schools can come and use it and even members from, you know, families who have small children could come in if they opened it up in the evenings or on the weekends. I know I'm not quite sure where they are on that, but I think that was still the plan. So it was not just to be confined to Cypress Ridge, it was to be used by Cypress Ridge and they would be operating and manning it, however, they would allow other schools to come in and participate in that and, and because one of the big concerns we've had is the Orlando Science Center is far away, that by the time you get the children driven down there, their time is, is reduced because of the distance and then travel back, let alone the cost. So this was a way for them, and this was their idea, it was innovative and they took the, and they wrote grants to get the supplies and to build these, these hands-on science experiments and where you can actually engage in experiencing science in that, that mode. They did put together a whole plan with developing, you know, and they're calling it the Discovery Science Center at Cypress Ridge. I do understand and I, and I think the public input speaker did raise some of the concerns that every school would like to have a science lab and I do understand that and some have some facilities that they do have science labs and they've opened it up. This is a very unique situation where, again, it is with these science demonstration portable stations that is very different than some of the other science programs, but again, we have moved forward with this based on the direction they currently seated board at that time had given us and we've worked through trying to find every kind of portable configuration to be as cost-efficient as possible. We've, we've, and I have to applaud John Carr and Mr. Delpit working together because they have tried to be as cost-efficient with this as possible. So we're really down to the bottom line is, is that do we want to support this innovative, which is different and out of the box and give them that flexibility? Cypress Ridge does not have extra space. It is landlocked, it is bound up and they don't even have a cafeteria to be able to go in and do these kinds of things like other schools do. And so they have, you know, they're one of the facilities that is on the list from the sales tax to get some much-needed improvements. We tried to use existing space, that's just not possible, again, because they're using every single point of it. So this was one way to help provide that support to Cypress Ridge. Again, Mr. Delpit is here, he can speak to it in greater detail than I can, even though I've experienced a lot of the science kits and it is pretty fantastic what they've put together and the fact that they're willing to open it up, not just their school benefits from it, other schools do, but again, we're at the pleasure of the board, the point, I understand the point is, it is a spend, it will come out of the capital budget. I do believe it is something that is worth considering and so it is on the agenda because of previous direction from the board, but I, I recognize and respect we have a new seated board collectively as a group and you may choose to go a different way.
Mr. Chairman? My, my concern is, and number one, why a portable? And as you said, we are landlocked and my understanding is, we are supposed to be trying to put together a cafeteria on that campus and if we do, where are we going to put this? That it's not going to be in the way when we have future construction going on for that.
Yeah, perhaps, Mr. Delpit, would you mind coming forward to be able to answer some of the questions? Dr. Moxley has certainly alluded to the changeover in the board and I think there are some folks who weren't part of the original presentation that you gave to us, so certainly you don't have to go into that much detail, but I think you'd probably be the best one to be able to answer some of these questions.
Thank you first for the opportunity even to be at this level of this stage. I certainly understand the concerns of the needs of the schools, we also have those needs, the cafeterias, et cetera, but we can call this a want, but we can also call it an initiative, a vision, a dream, a reality that can offer opportunities to all the students in Lake County. I just want to say one side part on, not just can we offer field trips to the other elementary school students, but my greatest vision here is imagine if we go to all the high school engineering, science teachers, all the technology, technological classes we have and we have high school students building exhibits as part of a project in high school that can then be demonstrated at, at a field trip level for all the students in Lake County. So I just think the potential of what this can offer to not just elementary school students, but all the students is, is just, yes, ma'am?
And teachers as well, isn't that something that we spoke about as well?
Absolutely. In other words, I would want to invite the teachers who would then choose to make those projects with their students. Now, as far as the, the space, they have looked at that from the level of where would the cafeteria be built and where would the DSC? We have the capabilities of putting the DSC in a location that I can give alternative traffic patterns for when we are under construction.
And how, would this have any sort of effect on available PE space or parking?
At this point in time, where the DSC would go would not have any real impact on, on the space where we presently have. Now, the cafeteria gets built, that of course will be both the cafeteria and the construction zone area, but we still have adequate field space, even though it's tight.
So you're looking at putting it, I, I've got your picture of your campus here.
Right.
And you're looking at possibly then putting it on the northwest part of the campus?
Um, yes, northwest.
Northwest would be cafeteria side of the entrance on the back.
It's right next to the row of portables. In other words, you'll see there's two rows of portables.
That's on the south side.
I was going to say the south, yes.
Okay. I got you.
It's only a five-to-ten-year plan, though, right? And then the plan, the ultimate plan is to build a physical structure.
Now, in a fight.
I discussed with John Carr that and that was the ultimate plan and you're already doing a build currently, is the build currently scheduled to be built, the cafeteria, right?
And the cafeteria has some classroom space, but that would not be used for the Discovery Science.
Correct.
This is a standalone project.
Correct.
I mean, I love, I love, I mean, obviously, you all know I love science, but I'm very concerned with the, I don't know, I don't know, I, I wasn't part of the workshopping process, obviously, and I'm just very concerned, like at Treadway, which was brought up and I had a parent contact me and when my son went there, so that was three years ago now, anytime there's rain and there's a transition, they take all the kindergartners and first graders that are in the portables and they put them in the brick and mortar classrooms and so then you have two teachers in a brick and mortar classroom because they don't want to transition young kids in the rain, so they're not running for it. I think before that, the previous principal had them run for it. So, I mean, when they're asking for walkways, they're just, they're real, like, it's a real, it's, it's quite the need, it seems to be a need that's affecting their education. And this, I think, you know, I've seen a lot of science centers, I've seen them done really great, I've seen, and you and I talked, I, I talked with him, I talked with John Carr, I, I talked with Treadway, I, I called all over the world about this one. But I've seen, and, and, I mean, there are, there's upkeep costs and, and he's thought it out and, and, and it could be done, but it could also be done a lot better in a, in an actual facility. I'm concerned by the portable.
Yeah, I, well, perhaps, well, I guess we're getting down the road of a lot of discussion here without actually having a motion on the floor.
Right.
Perhaps we, but, but to speak to the, the point about a facility is that the cafeteria doesn't, doesn't create that space and that's the next project on the list. They're also on the sales tax list, but I think like project eight or nine or something. So, so we're talking fifteen-plus years.
Right, Treadway's further, not on the list at all, not even for walkways. I mean.
Well, what, what I'm.
I don't know when that happens.
What, what I'm saying is that the, that permanence for this kind of facility wouldn't exist for, for fifteen years or so, right? At least, and that's if we were to put that into the sales tax. So I'm, I'm kind of confused where the five-year timeline is to build.
You said five to ten years.
Permanent.
I said ten-plus years. We were looking at the five to ten from zero to ten and we were looking at down the road further. We were talking about master plan.
Wait, yes.
That's what?
I'm sorry, I'm confused. Five to ten, okay, ten, what is master plan?
Mr. Carr, you need to come up if you're going to speak to the board.
So.
Yeah, basically with the concept of timelines with regard to portable versus hard construction. As far as having a definitive date for hard construction, that could not be determined because I said that was not part of the five-year plan and we were looking at a master plan that would go down the road to address at some point in time, perhaps within the ten-year plan, to consolidate the portables into a hard structure, into a brick and mortar structure, as you pointed out. So then we went back to the conversation of how this portable, you know, which, which is, you know, quite a quality construction, it's, it's a 2B-type construction, I want to make sure that everybody understands, this is not something. that everybody understands, this is not something that's just sticks, that's going to.
No, you convinced me of that.
Correct. So this was, again, going back to, you know, basically, you know, having, you know, this Science Discovery Center, you know, to accommodate the immediate need, and this was something that we worked hard to try to find, to create availability with regard to the square footage that would be required to properly demonstrate the exhibits and have the opportunity to be dynamic with the exhibits, i.e. change them with, and that's where we go back to Mr. Delpit, however you want to do it, but this would also lend that opportunity to be constantly evolving with whatever the theme potentially could be. And this, again, would satisfy the short-term to mid-range goals. And then our conversation was what would happen in a long-range plan, what would happen? And then those trailers would then be repurposed, they would be removed from that site. And I think that might be where perhaps maybe some confusion might have come.
How long is the lifetime of this? Because this trailer is already 10 years old.
That is, that is correct. It all depends on how it's maintained. We have some trailers that are 20-plus years old, yes ma'am?
So 10-ish years.
Like I said, it all depends on how they're maintained. We have, you know, houses, you know, that are far less inferior construction than this, that is erected, so we can extend this out as needed. It's difficult to predict the future.
Okay.
If I recall, some of the previous board discussion about this topic before wasn't necessarily focusing on this to fulfill a facility's need, but rather what was the academic investment?
That is correct.
And the academic investment just happens to be being paid for here out of the capital budget.
Correct.
When we look at Cypress Ridge's science scores, and I don't remember them off the top of my head, but your proficiency level last year was, was it 7, 80-something was last year?
Eighty-seven.
And there's something to be said about what they're doing at Cypress Ridge, and to think about making that kind of knowledge available to all these other schools, but the professional development piece for teachers, the experience for students, it's the academic investment that we're looking at here.
How does that, see, and maybe we should workshop this, because, like, I don't know, that would be my suggestion, because we haven't had any, like, I don't, I don't understand how, how, how does Cypress Ridge is doing great, so how does that translate to Umatilla? Like, like, no, go ahead.
Umatilla Elementary can go to the site.
But they could go to the Science Center.
Yeah, but it's much cheaper to go to here, and not only that, but I mean, if you can, and this, again, this is part of that visionary piece, that because they're ours, and please correct me, please, Mr. Delpit, if I'm not saying something correctly, there's professional development opportunities, we have professional development days worked into our schedule where the teachers could come to Cypress Ridge, they could do model lessons, something I was going to bring up today that we did at the Central Florida, School Post Coalition this morning is actually uploading YouTube videos onto a Lake County teacher tube, that they can share their, what they're doing in the Science Center, the Cypress Ridge Science Center. So it is PD for teachers as well as students without the cost. The transportation alone to the Science Center would probably make it a pretty expensive field trip, and it's not, it's not a costly field trip in regards to admission prices either.
And if I may just add this piece, you're looking at a dedicated staff that's willing to give their time, their energy, their knowledge, and their passion. So if I had to say, what is it that Cypress Ridge, it's not about Cypress Ridge, the school, it's about Cypress Ridge trying to offer something back to the community, to the district, to the students, and they're sacrificing, giving, volunteering their time to do it.
Right.
So the opportunity is here that it won't be in a 10-year plan or five-year plans.
And I, and I got that from you. I, your passion, like, pours out of you, I totally got that. What I did wonder, with the new superintendent coming on, is how long, I don't even know how long you'll be at that school. I know you were at Groveland before, I've heard great things about you, you know, like, I, you know, I don't know how, I just don't know, I don't know how, how long you'll be there, and I don't know also where this fits in all the list of other massive priorities throughout the district.
For me personally, may I?
Yes, please.
There are lots of priorities. I feel like this is kind of a conversation about, we're never going to have extra money laying around, and it's not that we're just giving Cypress Ridge extra money. I can name, UCs Elementary School has portables that are uncovered, that my own daughter walked in the rain several times when she was a third grader. We have needs in this district that will never go away, and if we can't start investing funds in these academic opportunities, this is, this is, when people talk about having a C district, we have a Science Center that our students can come to. This is something I would love to see replicated on this end of the county. We have so many opportunities in this district, and if we continue to focus on the needs of this district that are plentiful and in abundance, and just associate ourselves there, then I feel like we will always be behind the eight ball in regards to what we can offer our students.
But there's $500,000 for minor.
There's more than that.
Let me qualify, and again, for the benefit of some historical prospectus, that Treadway is number seven on the list, by the way. So it's number seven of the list that we prioritize for the sales tax initiative, and that, at that time, and I think moving forward, this board will be committed to stay on track with those. So it hasn't been ignored, but we had an opportunity, and this was worked shot, and we spoke about giving this benefit to all the students of Lake County, and it's out of the box for sure, but I happen to support it. I just want you to know that.
I just want to say, it's not that I don't support it, I support real buildings. To me, this, this is 10 years old. My question would be, when was the last time the HVAC was replaced? Because we get it a year later, it's our building, and we've got to replace the HVAC because it goes down, you know, that's, now we've inherited that. Is there any kind of warranty? I didn't see anything.
Yes, well, it's a warranty that it works, and we can build that in, you know, to whatever we want to do, as far as, you know, on, at least prior to purchase, everything is checked that it's in working condition. I mean, certainly, you know, when you're dealing with equipment, you have life and longevity, I mean, it's expected to perform, and as far as to have a professional assessment to its longevity, that's something we could obviously look into, but, you know, we have that, you know, throughout. And again, these are portables, this is not like a chiller that you would be associating a significant amount of cost to.
Well, the, what I'm saying is, that's 10 years old already, and the lifeline of most of those AC units on that is anywhere from 10 to 12 years. So, I mean, we would be looking at that, and that's why I'm thinking, but what I'm going to get to is this, and I appreciate this, because when I was a elementary student a few years back, we had a place in Howie.
We did.
That we went to, that was centralized for all the schools could go to and learn about the Space Center and the stars and everything, I mean, it was great. And I think this is something that would be great, but I would just like it to be more in a real building, you know? That way I'm not worried about all these other things that come into play when you buy used equipment, you're buying used equipment, and that's what worries me, and if the warranty needs to be worked in the contract that says, hey, you're going to give us a year warranty on this, you know, and include labor on that, because otherwise, we've got our HVAC, especially on the south end, they are overtaxed with what they're doing, and they're shorthanded. So if we put something like that down there, and then all of a sudden we start having problems, then we've got to, you know, we've got more problems on problems out there. So that's my concern on that. I prefer real buildings, and as far as the cafeteria on that, looking, the superintendent and John and Carol and I talked before the Christmas break about, you know, I'd like for us to reassess that, because I understand it's a single-story, and that's a waste of money for our taxpayer money, to go single-story anywhere in anything that we build.
Could we reassess that and add this? And I, I support the concept. It's not that I don't support the sciences, and I really do support the sciences. And I support the concept. I am very concerned about the execution of this particular, the way we're executing this concept. And that's, that's my biggest concern. Like, if we could somehow fit it, you know, pour it into the build of the cafeteria, to me, that would make a lot more sense, you know? Maybe it would be the second story. I lived at the planetarium, I loved it, you know, I remember it, I remember every teacher there, you know? So, and I, and, but I also know it was shut down for cost, you know, so we have to make hard choices.
And certainly I agree that if we could put it in a brick and mortar facility, that would certainly be the best. To go back, yes, we can go back and reassess, you know, the cafeteria, and I hear two, two issues, one, making it a two-story, that's one thing, and then this, if you're going to incorporate this into that scope, you're going to have to go back to the five-year capital plan and re-prioritize, because to do this same square footage in brick and mortar is going to really raise the price, which means you will have to go back and really re-prioritize through the capital plan, and whereas this is, this amount that's in this agenda item, I don't even want to be able to begin to guess what it would be in bricks and mortar, I would say it's probably then again double or more, probably triple, up, up, I'm getting that, up, up more, more, more. And because we had talked about this back several, several months ago, and just then we really would never get to walkways either. And so I think this was our way of being able to invest in this academic program, move it forward. The Science Center was completely staffed with a whole staff as a separate facility, that's what, why it ended up being shut down because of the cost of operating it. Here, we're not adding any additional cost to staff it. Mr. Delpit is doing that all within his own staff, and so it was just the fact that he needed the space, and this portable happened, this will be, isn't it like a four, four segment by?
Three.
Three, three units coming together to make some really big space with the restroom facilities. So again, when you really look at what we're going to get for the cost, it is the most cost-efficient way to do it. However, it is a portable versus bricks and mortar, but at this point in time, I, I believe it would just, to put it in bricks and mortar and expand that scope, would totally take the whole project out of reach in priorities. But, but again, to make it happen, you would have to go back and take something else or some, some things off the list, which we were really not wanting to do, because we really want everybody to get as close to where they are on the list.
And I had that very same conversation with that exact angle about working it into the cafeteria, and I believe in the initial cost that we looked at, the cost was just way too high, and I knew something was going to fall out of the five-year plan as a result of that. And looking at the schools that are top on that list, I just don't know how we could afford to drop them down or delay them at all. Looking at the academic benefits, I was pretty thrilled with this.
Well, just real quick, I mean, what is the average right now for square footage cost to build out of ground?
Well, it all depends on the site and what we have to do for the preparation of the site, et cetera, and basically the purpose of it and the type of construction we're going to use. So there are state guidelines, it varies greatly, anywhere from, you know, it could go anywhere from like 275 to getting close to, well, around over 300 to 400 a square. But again, you've got to look at, you've got a couple of things going on there with that number, we're looking at completely finished costs, because, you know, we have basically all the MEP and all the requirements of IT to go in the classrooms as well, too, and that significantly adds to the cost. And this is one thing I just ask that you remember or keep into consideration with regard to those costs, because it's just like when we were talking, Ms. Luke and I've had numerous conversations about tilt-up construction, and then we can get up and look at some cost savings, but still, the scope of the cost inside, when we're fitting out the classroom, it is the same. The one thing we can look at that I can share with you as far as buying a new portable for this, I mean, because you were talking about the things that goes with that, it would be more than double this cost.
Fifty-eight thousand.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
And it has a one-year warranty.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
One-year warranty.
On the new one?
No.
No.
One has a one-year warranty.
Has a one-year.
On the HVAC.
All right. Do you have a recommendation?
Okay, I'm going to put the recommendation that the board approve and execute the amendment to agreement to, for contract number 38, I'm sorry, let me get this up, 3801PB per Swanee County RFP, number 11-203 Type 2B Panalys Modular Buildings with Mobile Modular Management Corporation, for the purchase, delivery, and installation of one used 36x56 multipurpose modular building that is 2,016 square feet with one ADA restroom to be placed at Cypress Ridge Elementary School for the purpose of their Discovery Science Center.
I've heard the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion?
So moved.
Stephanie, second by Bill. Are there any other questions or discussion before we go to a vote on that?
Oh, I mean, I think we all know how we're going to vote.
Okay, all right. Then all those in favor of approving the superintendent's recommendation, say aye.
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 I'm with reservations. I want to be one of the first ones there.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, that is four to one. Next item that was pulled for separate consideration is 8.08, because there's a public input card on that one, Caroline Van Deikin, that one belongs to you as well.
Okay, I'm asking for your consideration in pulling 8.08, renewal for legal counsel. I'm asking you workshop this item before approving the contract. This will allow you to discuss things like, could the district save money by using an in-house attorney, or should this be placed out for bid altogether? And what's the total cost of the current contract, including the extras negotiated between the firm and the superintendent on the excluded items? After eight years of using the same legal counsel, and in consideration of the new superintendent coming aboard, I think it's in your best interest to explore these options. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Your thoughts? I guess, actually, within the procedures, a parliamentary procedure, we technically should get a motion and a second on the floor before we go ahead and with our discussion. So let's try to stick to more of that organized approach, and then certainly, the seconding doesn't necessarily mean that you agree with it, just that you want to bring it to the floor for discussion, and then that's where we'll pose all our questions and discussion and keep the flow of that. So, do you have a recommendation?
I do have a recommendation. I want you to know that I do not do my own separate negotiation for any legal fees. I just want to go on the record as clarifying that statement. We honor the board's work on that, and I believe Mrs. McLeod, several of you asked some questions of Mrs. McLeod, and she forwarded all that information to you. She is certainly available to answer any questions if you have about that. I am recommending that the school board affirm, reaffirm existing legal counsel and continue the board's professional relationship with Stephen W. Johnson Esquire and the law firm of Macklin Burnside for the calendar year of 2017.
All right, I've heard the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Bill, second, any seconds?
Second.
All right, Stephanie, second by Stephanie, all right.
Can we open for just?
So now we've got a motion on the floor, so we can certainly proceed with some questions or comments or discussion on that.
I would be interested in amending the motion to have a six-month, to have a six-month contract, as opposed to a one-year contract, because we have a new superintendent coming on, and I'm interested in looking into in-house counsel. This has nothing to do with current counsel, but I would be interested in looking into in-house counsel. I've contacted, oh, I didn't write his name down, a very well-respected lawyer from Seminole, and, you know, he gave me some, some guidelines as to how to go about doing that, and that we wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily have a huge cost savings. It looks like we can, we can get a, we, he suggests, we could get away probably to start with for sure, one counsel and a paralegal. He suggests that the new incoming superintendent look, you know, do her networking with the counties that do have counsel, that would be Seminole, Latuma, Volusia, Lee Clay, Pinellas, Broward, Miami, David, and Palm Beach, the last three of which are huge and probably much less useful than the first ones. And, and, but we, what we will, what we might gain, I just think we should look into this, is more direct time. So currently we pay, I don't know, if you were to take his hourly rate, but the firm's hourly rate, we get about three-fourths of the year, if you were to like multiply it by years or by hours. So it makes sense to, I think it makes sense to look at an in-house counsel. I'll just, does anyone else have any?
I have an opinion about it. First of all, I happen to be an advocate of outsourcing, and I want it to be understood that the selection, or if we weren't in this moment, that the board attorney is one of the few employees that actually answers to us, the board. So I'm not sure that it really has anything to do with our new superintendent. The other is, I will tell you that, that anyone who has a successful business knows that you have a good CPA and you have a good attorney, those are critical. And I want to say with absolute conviction that the service that we have received. And I want to say with absolute conviction that the service that we have received from Mr. Johnson and from Macklin Burnside, his firm, is stellar. And so at any point in time, if you read the contract, we could end it with 30 days' notice, period. So if at some point after, after, if there is a sense that we need to discuss it, then it certainly could come forward to this board at any time. He is our employee. Let's just, that's the way it is. And so the idea of a six-month over what is the traditional one-year contract makes no sense to me. The idea of looking at outsourcing, I think, has merit. And if there wanted to be a committee and it wanted to have some, a professional committee to review and bring information back to the board, that at any time, we could discuss it without dragging it out over this particular contract. But, but I want to make it absolutely clear of, of, in my four years of, of working with Mr. Johnson, that, that his advice and, and sometimes mentoring has been appreciated and is supported by this board member.
May I? I had an opportunity also to speak today at the Central Florida Coalition. I asked a couple of districts that were relative to the size of Lake County to, to stay after if they wouldn't mind and speak to me because after trying to sort through other districts' budgets, that's even harder to sort through than our own and to really tell what some of the costs were that were associated with counsel. I did speak with Seminole, Brevard, and Manatee. Mayor Marion was there, but they did not stay afterwards. Manatee was actually kind of funny because apparently they've been under a lot of duress with their legal, legal fees because they've had so many situations that have arisen. So he did not feel that giving us his amount of money would be even substantial to consider. But he did say in the past, and this came from a very veteran board member, that, that around $300,000 rings a bell for what they pay for their counsel and that they also outsource their ESE and they outsource their labor relations in addition to 300,000. I did speak with Brevard, who just went through the process of bidding. And they have found, they have, they have not retained the person yet, but they have landed on the person they planned to offer a contract to. That person requires a $7,000 a month retainer and $125 an hour. They still outsource their ESE and their labor relations after a bidding process in that county. They're, they're, they do have an outsourced, but it's just under $300,000. And that's before their outsourced expenses again. Seminole County has an in-house counsel and an outsourced counsel because they have, like, Mr. Mathias spoke to, Mr. Johnson is our employee. So they have one that's for their board and they also have one for their superintendent and their, their district. With their board attorney, they have three, and they pay one of them $150,000 and then the others, just, the other two just under $100,000. So again, they're paying around $300,000, $350,000. And they also outsource ESE and labor relations, which was the common thread of the conversation. And they have a firm out of Tampa that they hire to do their trial law. So it was very interesting to me that the ballpark figure, that, that the firm that we currently use is right around the same as what everybody else is doing, if not less than. And I do have to say that every person that I spoke to, and including myself, I can reiterate what Mr. Mathias said, as far as my, my own personal relationship with Mr. Johnson, he's available anytime I call. His counsel has been very sound, in my opinion. But in addition to that, sometimes we don't want to bargain hunt for a lawyer, that you get what you pay for and that there's something to be said about institutional wisdom and that he has several years in regards to school law and school board law, and he can support us in that way. Whereas somebody new might be more, more reasonably priced, whatever you consider reasonable. But they're going to have to outsource even more so than, than our current attorney does because of the experience that they have, so.
I just wanted to say, I was never implying that I wanted to bargain hunt for a lawyer.
Sandy, do you have any thoughts?
Well, I mean, you're, you're kind of tossed up here. I, I just had a couple of questions now. In the figure that we saw, Mr. Johnson, when we have to have labor management, that is not part of this fee that we see here, or is it?
Fee that's in the contract is a one hourly rate. There is no other retainer or any additional charges built into it. Lake County, we have outsourced the ESE. It's a fairly minimal amount of money. And we've outsourced labor, but only to the extent that it was a complex union matter such as the impasse. And that's the only time in the last 10 years that we've had any, any expense of more than a thousand or a couple of thousand dollars related to labor. I have myself and another lawyer who both do labor and employment work, and we've always done that in-house as well as other things which you would not receive in other counties, some of these same counties. I mean, we've been, we've been representing the school district since 1978. So the eight, I'm not sure where the eight years came from, except for a three-year period. I started representing, doing the work for the school board in 1985 and have been the primary representative for the firm for, just going on 17 years now. Obviously, I'm aware of this issue. It comes up every three or four years for also obvious reasons. And I have, and I am well aware of these numbers that you're throwing around because we have been very careful to try to make sure that we remain reasonable in price for the hourly rate. I mean, the hourly rate we charge the school board is about half of my normal hourly rate. We do that because we're aware of what it costs to get a lawyer and a paralegal and a person, and then to, and then to have to pay for other lawyers outside of that on top of that. There's really no way to compare year to year for attorney's fees because different things happen. Well, you'll look back a couple of years, two, three years ago, there was a big spike in the amount of attorney's fees. It was during the litigation involving Ajax, where there was two or, two or 300,000 over a couple of years, more than the average. But what it doesn't show when you look at those charges is that we recovered all of those attorney's fees from Ajax plus another 100 or 200,000 on top of that. So it's, it's very difficult to compare between one county and another. You can look at it and get a general idea. If you're unsatisfied with the services, that's a whole nother issue to me. Those are two separate things. I have no problem and, and I encourage you to look into the cost of what it would be on other methodologies of doing it because I'm fairly confident that you won't be able to have a firm with 12 lawyers and four lawyers in particular who have worked for years for the school district, all doing their work and all in specialized areas, that you're not going to get that for anybody else at anything near the cost that we have over the years. So I have no problem in doing that. And the 30 days is really not even 30 days. I mean, we built into the contract that if at any time you're unhappy with the services, the board votes that they're, they don't want us to be representing them anymore, we'll be leaving the next day if that's your desire. So, I mean, I, we file this contract every year because your policy says we're supposed to file for a contract every year. It is the same contract, I think, for 10 or 12 years now. All it does is establish an hourly rate. And that hourly rate on this contract is the same it's been for three years now.
Okay. The, the other thing is, and you brought it up since 1978, because we did have at two different times, or we had two different people that were in-house attorneys back, I believe during Jerry Smith's tenure.
You had Pam Saylor, who was the, actually the superintendent that asked me to take over this job, was a, a school board, was the district attorney. I think she did it for one or two years. And it ended up, spent all her time on policies and procedures for the most part, I think.
And there was somebody before her, though. It was a, I want to say it was Bruce that was before her, if I'm not mistaken. But there was someone that was-
An in-house lawyer? I don't remember another one, Sandy. I remember back to Freddie Garner and Dr. Commander was here, I think.
But what I'm leading to is, your firm has been doing it since 78.
Yes, sir.
So whether we had it in-house or, or not, we still had an outside lawyer at all times.
Yes, sir. Oh, yes. During that period of time, I actually, when Ms. Saylor was the attorney, I actually did more work during that period of time than I had in the previous couple of years.
Okay. So this is an issue that I had actually looked at two years ago. So I think it even is more recent than your-
Yes, sir. I remember that.
-three to four that you've advertised when I first got on the board. And I was inspired by a column that suggested that there was potential savings there. And so then I, I dug into it as well, looking at what other districts are paying and what are they getting for that? And, and I, to be honest, I couldn't find that there would be a substantial savings for us. In fact, there was a risk that it would even cost more based on what you're outsourcing. And, and so then I was at an event last week with a lot of lawyers present. And I, I said, I said, do you think we'd even be able to find a qualified person to do school law, who knows it, for us here in Lake County? And said, oh, yeah, I'm sure you'll have no problem finding somebody who says that they know that. What, what rate is your lawyer charging? And I said, $175,000. And they said, oh, wow, that, that's a bargain. You're really shopping around for that? And, and they did mention that rates tend to be twice that. So I was, I was equally surprised. So, I mean, that being said, and given the, the terms of our contract that we could pull out, I mean, really at any time that we decide, my inclination would be to go ahead and approve it tonight. I don't know that I'm opposed to having the information come forward in a, in a workshop setting to show us what other districts are paying, you know, so we can feel good and make sure that we want to go with that decision. But I, I think the numbers are probably, you know, not going to be as, as, as hopeful as we want.
I know what Marion County pays on the high end is right at 148,000. But as he stated, we're talking about having four individuals in a firm working for us versus hiring one person that either he knows it or he doesn't know it. So, I mean, and like Mr. Mathias said, you know, you, you got to be careful. And Ms. Luke, you can't just go shopping out there. It, it's not, it's not the bottom dollar is the best quality. And, and that's what we've got to be looking at. And, and Mr. Johnson, Steve, I, I have nothing against you personally, but, you know, if, if it comes to saving the, the school board money, then that's what I'm looking at. But I'm looking at also that what I'm hearing and what I've researched myself, it is not cost effective to, to try to do this another way right now. If it, if it comes down the, the path somewhere down the road, then that's what we need to venture into. And we can do it is we've got 30-day clause or a one-day clause. We can, and they also in their contract, because I did read it, it says that they would turn over all information that they had on any outside cases or whatever if we wanted that. Or they would continue to finish up those cases and close them out for us, but we would pay for it. But still, I mean, they would do it. So I, I, I have no problem with us going forward with this tonight. But in the future, something like this, I would like for us to look at maybe ahead of time, bringing this into a workshop and say, hey, how do y'all feel about this so that we hash it out? It's still in public, but yet it's not like this.
Well, one of the things that I, I found was that some of the, we, we say four people, and some of those four people, even at your firm, I think this is legit, is like that they work, I, I don't want to name names. Some may work very few hours, some, at least at some times. I'm sure they work more hours other times. But over the course of the year, they may not be, they're not a full-time lawyer, is my point. They have other-
For us.
For us, for us. Obviously, they're a full-time lawyer. Yes, they're not a full-time lawyer for us. And so it's not as if we would be paying for four lawyers if we were doing it.
I, I think what might have been alluded to there is that we get the benefit of this multiple set of lawyers. And, and this, this is what Coach Hesch and I had, you know, gone through before, is that with, with this firm of multiple lawyers, if we've got a real estate question, you've got somebody in the audience for that. If we've got the contract on, you named something that we performed or that we approved tonight, you know, paint, or we've got somebody for that. And, and that we always have somebody available to come to our meetings. That the drawback would be then, we've got an in-house guy not available on, for whatever reason, Monday night or is sick, then we're going outside for that. And are we going to get that person for $175?
Right.
Well, not anymore. I guess it might be $350. So, so, so then you lose the savings and the more times you need to go outside, even though you've got a person on staff.
So I, like, when I read the contract, the way Mr. Mathias read it, we sort of read it completely opposite. So I read it as, oh, my gosh, we have two weeks. We have to make a yes or no decision. We have two weeks and we should have made this decision two months ago. That's why I was suggesting the six-month contract. You're reading it as we can, and he's suggesting, we can investigate this and then potentially terminate in six months or put an RFP out or whatever.
Right.
I'm not, I'm just throwing six months out as a number, which I do think would be reasonable. I think, I just think that we need to, I think it's time this district asked the question and got some hard numbers as opposed to random people throwing numbers in the air. Because we, as a district, have certain, I mean, we could, we could base it off of last year. We have certain needs and say, you know, we have this many ESE needs, this much administrative needs, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And get an idea of what kind of a legal counsel and then get an idea of how much outsourcing we would need versus, we can get a, an estimate idea and investigate and then we can make a decision. I just, I feel like we're making, we're making, I, this feels like with two weeks to go, it's a decision that we're making based on time as opposed to based on evidence.
It actually is based empirically for me in a relationship with counsel that, that I suspected was going to be just renewed and moving forward. So I'm not feeling pressured at all about this. But I also want to say that, that in 2009, in the, in the height of, of the recession and looking at the numbers we spent on legal, that, and spoke specifically with Mr. Johnson, and you have to understand that the school district, that we're a target for litigation. So one day and another day, if, if, there was a social post the other day that was applauding some parent for suing the school district, where every time they do that, it comes back to legal fees. That, that the idea of how prepared we are for meetings, Mr. Johnson, he goes, we'll make your meeting shorter. So how prepared we are at our meetings to take action and move forward affects his hourly rate because he's being paid hourly. But I will attest that, that this is not, this is not a, a, a piggy bank for Macklin Burnside based on the fee that they're charging. It is, in my opinion, well, well, well below market and for the talent that we've all spoken about that's available to us. So again, I'm ready for a vote.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, call for vote.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Then let's go into the vote. All those in favor of approving the contract as recommended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? All right. And that carries 5-0. Next item is 9.05. I have pulled, that was-
Mr. Campbell.
Just a quick little thing here about this. And, and number one, I, I understand in reading the information in the agenda that it speaks to only being for the duration of the grant. But how long is the grant for?
One year.
For one year? I thought it was for more than that.
I have the grant if you want.
One-year grant, right?
Um, it's a one-year grant, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, I missed that in the reading of that, then.
There were a lot of words.
Yeah. Okay. And then, but does this have to be a, a position or can the funding be used in something else?
It, it has to be in personnel. So if we do not want to move forward with this, then we will not access the grant. We will, we will not get the money. So it's just a matter of-
Okay, I'm good.
It's their requirement and we wanted to take advantage of it.
Okay.
I, I actually marked this one also, just as in changes to the language of the, of the, um, the draft. Because it is a one-year grant, one of the things that we seem to, or appears to do, we hire somebody with a grant and then they kind of stay on. Can we put in the language of this, of this job offer and this, that it is a one-year contract position?
Yes. And, and we haven't, we haven't set up to be that way.
Where?
And when we have done these before, if you'll notice in the job description, it says this, this position is, is grant funded and we do not extend it beyond the grant. So they know-
And the position goal?
Yeah. You'll see where it talks about the position goal provides vision leadership and it talks about this position is grant funded.
Is that clear in this field? Like in my field, I would, it would, it would say one-year contract.
And we can, we can put that-
I mean, Mr. Johnson-
We can, we can do that on the appointment.
I mean, is that, because to me, position is grant funded just means this money comes from a grant. It doesn't mean that this is only a one-year position, whereas it's a one-year contract means it's only a one-year position.
We can put it in, when we hire someone, we can put it in that it's for one year only.
So in the, in the contract that you offer, it would, it would detail that?
With that appointment, yes.
Shouldn't it be in the job description?
But if there is merit to the position, then we look at it through the strategic plan though.
Yeah, and we would reevaluate it next.
Figure out how to fund it. But in the personal one-year contract.
Job descriptions that are just sitting out there that aren't allocated to be filled.
I don't think that answered the question.
Hmm.
So, so putting this in the job description, um, then require, well, I guess it would require revision of the job description if ultimately we decide to include it, that, um, because it wouldn't forever potentially be a, a one-year grant-funded position if we're paying for it. But in the contract offer, then that's specific to this amount, this person.
You can do that appointment. The other, the other suggestion, if I may, um, you'll notice the other attachment on this is the staffing plan revision, adding it to the staffing plan. You'll see that it, it, um, on the right, it says grant-funded. We can add language grant-funded for the term of the grant provision or the grant award, which means that position is only on the staffing plan for the duration of the grant only. And that means we can't fill it beyond that. I mean, that's, that's it.
I just want us to come back and reevaluate it. That's, I'm, I'm not saying if it's a great position, but we do need to reevaluate that. Um, that's my point. Um, and then my other point is this is an ELL position and I personally, and as, as far as I understand, this is okay with legal law, I think this person should speak a second language. I think that that should be part of the job. They're a director of ELL.
Um, I'm going to ask Katie Pearson to come forward because she oversees this, but I'm going to make a comment while Katie's coming forward.
Is that not for?
One, um, they are, they are looking at strategies on how to deal with students of other languages. We have multiple languages spoken in our county. I think there's like twenty-seven maybe or.
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight, okay. Um, seventy-eight different languages. So we can put the requirement, but it's like which one of those languages? When in essence, it isn't about communicating in, in a different language. It's about the strategies that you're using to get the students that are in the ELL program, um, transitioned and proficient. So Katie, if you want to speak to it.
Yeah, we have about twenty-eight different languages, but seventy-eight if we count all the dialects within those languages. Um, this position was given to us from, um, the state of Florida. And the state of Florida looked at federal funding that they had and tied it directly to, um, this particular position. Then they put the grant out and asked districts to apply. So in applying, our, um, grant application was considered to be, um, one of the strongest and that's why we were given the, um, position. So it can only be used for this position and the job description ties directly to the grant objectives and the grant outcomes. So in looking at that, it, it is just funded for the state for a year. But every year, that, as long as the state continues to offer that opportunity, we would apply to have the position refunded through those state federal funds. So we're not asking to add a position to stay. We're just asking to take, um, advantage of the opportunity that the state is giving us to provide this extra support around the needs of, um, English language learners across the state of Florida and Lake being one of the recipients that was tagged deemed worthy of having this role.
Great.
Okay, I still don't under, uh, I don't think you answered my, did you?
And as far as language, um, ESOL certification or endorsement is what we look at to determine are, um, people qualified to deal with the needs and the support around English language learners. These people are working with students to help them acquire the English language. So we don't have bilingual programs where they're working with them directly to support them speaking in their native language. It is to give them strategies and to help them acquire English language. So the certification would be in ESOL or ESOL endorsement, which is, you don't have to be bilingual to have that.
I know, my, I, yes, but I would, I would still think that being, learn e- any, any second language would help somebody, um, empathize with and understand better a child who is trying to learn English. So I'm not saying that we would specify our largest, uh, second language. I'm just saying.
We can add bilingual preferred and many of our teachers that do work with ESOL students happen to be bilingual. But, um, that is primarily for helping support the needs of our parents and translating materials that might go home to parents. So we have within a department, that is something that we do have individuals that are bilingual. Um, for this role, if it makes you feel that, um, that's a need, we can absolutely put that bilingual is preferred. But in the state of Florida, to work with English language learners, you don't have to be bilingual.
Mrs.? Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, what's the job, I mean, what is the grant position to do? Because that may.
Yes, so this, um, particular position is to work with our, um, schools that have the highest number of ELLs. Currently in the district, we have about two thousand English language learners. Um, we have four thousand or four thousand five hundred, if we count students that have been in the ESOL program, that are exited. So roughly, you're looking at about four thousand five hundred students in the district that, um, English is a second language for them. This particular individual will work with teachers that have higher numbers of English language learners in the classroom and provide some side-by-side coaching. Currently, we have staff that, um, works with schools, but their caseload is about, um, one staff member to about ten schools. So they get around to all of those, um, schools. But as far as providing some side-by-side coaching with specific individuals that will be outlined within that grant, we don't have an individual that does that. This person's also twelve months. Every other person that we have is, um, a, um, regular teacher contract. So they're done when the teachers are done. And there's no additional support or, um, PD that's really offered. So this person would be year-long and can support a year-long, um, initiative in working with teachers or providing professional development. So they're not to do any compliance. It's really just coaching, mentoring and side-by-side with demonstrating strategies and support and working with English language learners.
My, my recollection of having read this job description was that they're going to spend the majority of the time, and I'm just trying to, based on my interpretation from, uh, working with teachers and with developing those strategies or teaching those strategies, that their focus was not so much working with the child or the student. That was more so the teacher's job, but you're, I'm going to teach the teacher, if you will. Are, are they, are they expected to spend more time independently with, with students? Or was it primarily just teachers?
It is in the classroom, so that might be.
So they're going to interact with students?
Yeah, they're pulling some small groups or they might be working with the teacher. Um, and working with many of the teachers, our ELL population has grown. It's grown every year. And so we have some teachers that have had training, they've had support, they've had classes, they've had pedagogy around the needs of English language learners, but maybe never had an English language learner in their classroom. And so what we find sometimes is that unless you're, um, more on our south end, you may not have had, um, English language learners in your classroom, although you have had some training. And so once that happens, you can have students that come in speaking no English, come in speaking a little bit of English, come in with conversational English, or have come in with really as English is a second language and they're more fluent. So we see a gamut of what that support might look like or what that support may need. And many times teachers say, I really need someone to come in and just show me what that looks like or help me to, um, begin to move a student forward or groups of students forward because this is something new to me. So we look at that person as someone that is, um, on call, but then also kind of assigned to be in some of those places to provide that I know how to do this. I can stand with you and do it. I can help you, I can be here. And we do have people within the department that are doing some of that, but it's not specific just to, um, people that can be focused on within this grant. So it gives us a tremendous opportunity to really hone in, um, some pieces that we haven't had before.
And I, I guess the one other comment I would make is I know in a year from now, we're going to have some conversations about this position again. So I'd be interested in, in what sort of metrics you all might use to determine whether or not, uh, this position has been successful or what the impact has been. So that way we can, you know, make an educated decision in a year from now. Because when it's our own dollars paying for it, uh, that might be a different conversation.
Absolutely, and that's written into the grant.
I was just going to ask that.
We would have received the grant having, um, put in some metrics in terms of how we want to track the groups of students.
Okay.
Um, with regard to their progress and, um, information from teachers on what they need and was it effective?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, looks like we're ready for vote then.
So how do we?
I haven't.
Oh, you haven't given it, really?
How do we change, like, how do we, um, put in those changes?
What I'd like to do is I'm going to recommend that the board approve the new job description for the supplementary instructional support leader for English language learners with the addition of adding bilingual preferred and the addition to the staffing plan with the addition of, um, stating grant-funded for the duration of the grant.
All right, you've heard a recommendation from the superintendent. Is there a motion?
Subdued.
Motion by Bill, second by Dan, Sandy. Any other, uh, questions, comments, discussion on that? All right, then let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? All right, five zero. Uh, I think, um, next item has got a public, well, there's ten point eleven and ten point twelve, which are very closely related. Mr. Tibbetts, you had, uh, submitted a public input card for ten point twelve. So feel free, come on up. And I think your questions are probably going to be the same for ten point eleven and twelve. And then we'll go ahead and, and, and hear from the superintendent and address those items.
Mr. Chairman and board members, I wasn't explicit in filling out my card. I have about three things I want to talk to you about, but I'll start with ten point twelve. As a taxpayer, I have a real concern about sending Dr. Moxley and it's not personal, but she's going to be gone. You're also sending a principal who's located just in one school. It might be that four people need to go to this conference because of how elaborate it is and to gain current coverage. But in that case, it should be administrators who are going to be here and serve the whole district, not one school or someone who is leaving. This goes in hand in hand with a lot of the budget issues you've talked about tonight. And understand, you have two big jobs. You just did one of them in getting a new superintendent. The other one is how you spend your money. You had a big discussion about your attorney. First question I would ask, and Mr. Mathias brings it up. If you have a business, it's important to have an attorney that you rely on. But I wonder how many people who own a business or run a business pay their attorney more than they're making? You need to ask yourself that question. I want to also commend you on the change to the policy in terms of fundraising. And hopefully we'll avoid in the future, these individuals who've gone off on their own with what I can only describe as questionable activities to raise money and hand it over to the schools. And please keep that from happening. And finally, on a very positive note, I want to tell you at nine twenty-two tomorrow morning, eleven residents from Lakeview Terrace, ranging in age from seventy-one to a hundred and one, will be arriving in Humantel Elementary School to start their volunteering for the rest of the year. I will share two little sidelights. One of the volunteers got a phone call from a staff member saying, I think you made a mistake on your birthday when you filled it out. And she said, what did I put down? And they said, it says nineteen fifteen. She says, that would be correct. Oh, my God, was the response from the staff person. The other interesting thing is, we scheduled this for every Tuesday for the rest of the school year. And I asked an update. I had the calendar. I knew we were missing a day in March for spring bake. I wanted to know if there were any other days that we were missing. And there are seven or eight. And guess what? All because they're testing, testing, testing. This is just on Tuesdays. Maybe Tuesday is the only day they test. But I know the superintendent has already spoken about, we do too much testing. And all of a sudden, I got all these people who are excited about volunteering saying, what is this foolishness? We're not going to hardly come in March or April. But anyway, they're looking forward to it, as am I, to having them help the kids. It's going to be exciting. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to this. I'm going to speak to ten point twelve first. Ten point twelve is an opportunity for, um, some district representatives to participate in this, um, Carnegie Education Summit. This is an invitation that came to the district by one of our professional partners, UPD Consulting. UPD Consulting is working with us, they're working with us, it's been, um, it's about six or seven months now. We are part of a community of practice. That community of practice is grant-funded, so no district dollars pay for UPD's consulting. That is actually a service that we have gotten through grant dollars. And they are here and we are part of this community of practice with five other districts. They're, um, and we come together for different convenings. We are working on, um, eighth grade mathematics and Algebra One and we're looking at standards and instructional pedagogy and delivery to bolster up our, um, student achievement in those areas and our teachers', um, skill set and, and really as we go deeper into those, uh, content areas. So UPD came with this invitation. The district is fully paid for the individuals to go. They asked for Melissa Desjarrelle, one principal representative who's been involved in the high school Algebra One. It happens to be Ms. Llewellyn, um, that is the high school representative to go. We were given a third one, and that's for somebody in the curricular area. And when UPD learned of the superintendent transition, they actually came to our district back and said, we like the succession plan that your board has put forth and the transition from a new superintendent, the outgoing superintendent to a new superintendent. We would like to pay for a fourth person to come and we would like both superintendents, the incoming one to come and the, the one that is outgoing would have, so Diane Carnegie would be the incoming, me being the outgoing, because they found this as a golden opportunity to do a succession plan and a transition on the work that we're doing. So that, our district was given three slots. They came back and gave the fourth slot, um, asking for the, uh, both superintendents to be able to participate in this. There is no cost to the district in this. They are paying the full, right, they reimburse the district for that. So that is why I'm on there. I did not volunteer to go, I did not ask to go, I did not want a personal vacation. It is simply at the request of UPD because they support what this district did for a transition and succession planning. They said they do not see many school districts that do succession planning to that extent and they were excited about that. So this was their invitation and their offer. If you do not want me to go, that is fine with me. I certainly have other things to do. But I did, I, I am happy to go and I am happy to honor that request. And I thought, if that brings transition and that further supports, I am happy to attend. So that is ten point twelve and that is why that is, um, there. Ten point eleven, as you know, we are working with District Management Council on, um, the whole review of, um, supporting students and how we, um, apply resources, how we staff, how we schedule. This has to do with exceptional student education. It has to do with struggling students. It has to do with all students. And we're in the middle of that contract, um, there in that work. District Management Council is also right now, they are in our district, the month of January, they're gathering the task and time analysis of how we use our time and how that directly links to student achievement. So it's a very, very in-depth task analysis. And I know we've talked about this from time to time. What do people do? How do they use their time? There's cost efficiencies with that. And so we really have an opportunity to do that. Uh, we are a member district, so every year, this time in January, District Management Council does a summit for member district superintendents. It is a superintendents-only. So if we were not a member district and the superintendent, whomever it was, whether it was me, Ms. Carnegie, somebody else, we would not be able to participate in this. You have to be involved with District Management Council. They pay for everything except for air travel. Now, you're going to know, so, and it's, it's these three days, this Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. Um, so if we don't want to participate, that's fine. Um, we don't have to. But as part of our work with District Management Council, it's already, they, they pay for it. It's part of that membership. So if we don't want to take advantage of it, certainly we don't have to, but it cannot be transferred to anybody else. Um, I did say that they pay for everything. They reimburse the district for everything other than, um, the, the travel there, the airfare. Why you do not see any cost, additional cost to the district is because, um, several months ago, there was a, um, convening in Nashville and I was slated to go. Um, they were reimbursing the district, but, um, I had a plane ticket. That plane ticket, um, I had an illness, um, that I had a doctor's note. I was not permitted to fly for ten days. So I was not able to participate in that flight. With the doctor's note, the airline was very gracious and gave the district a credit for me to use on another, uh, travel. Well, my time is becoming very limited. That, that ticket is not transferable. So that's why, we already have it. It's in my name. Um, it doesn't have to be used, but you will not be refunded the money. It will just sit there and expire. So it seemed like it was a good opportunity. It was a, uh, it costs nothing to the district. And in fact, if we don't use it, we lose. Um, and in fact, if we don't use it, we lose. And I have been very transparent with, when I met with Ms. Carnegie today, about that, and she, I talked, we talked about the District Management Council and the work that we're giving. I will be bringing back all that knowledge to the district, and, but again, if you don't want me to go, that's fine. It's 20 degrees in New York. I love the weather here in Florida. This is not a vacation for me whatsoever, and I will not darken the outside of the door, outside of the cab to the hotel, and back from the hotel to the cab. So again, it is not a vacation on my part. I will not be doing anything other than in the meeting. Again, if you don't want me to go, that is fine, but we will not get reimbursed for the ticket, and we just will use, we will not be able to use the services of that portion of the membership.
All right. You have a recommendation to put forth?
Yes. I'll start with 10.11, that I recommend the approval of the out-of-state leave request for me to participate in DMC's 2017 Superintendent Strategies Summit in New York, beginning Wednesday, January 11 through the 13th.
All right. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion?
The move.
Motion by Sandy?
Second with comment.
Second by Bill. All right. Well, let's go ahead and jump into comment.
Okay, real quick. Does it make, I think this is a brilliant strategy on the part of 10.12 that Mrs. Carnegie would shadow and be part of it being collaborative. I see a lot of benefit to that. Is there an opportunity, based on what it sounds like this summit, for her to shadow you on the New York trip?
I don't know the answer to that. We would have to call tomorrow to see if that's possible. It may be that we would have to pick up the hotel, the additional person in the hotel and the flight. I mean, definitely the flight, but I don't know whether they would cover the hotel. I wouldn't know that.
I think there's benefit, personally, if it's even possible.
I don't, I can't speak for Ms. Carnegie's schedule on that one.
Well, does it even make sense to anybody else?
If she consider, I mean, she's not our employee yet.
The contract that we would approve tonight still doesn't have her starting work until...
Let her just ride along in the suitcase.
I mean, it's fine with me. I just don't, I can't speak for DMC until we would call them.
You have to call them and make the compelling argument.
I appreciate the idea and the thought, but I think because technically she wouldn't be unemployed to the 18th, that we would catch a lot of phone calls and emails.
Okay, I'm good. I'm ready to vote.
But I'd just like to say real quick also, on both issues, 10.11 and 12, the superintendent called me about these.
Yes.
And I think some of the things that some of the people didn't understand was that there was no cost behind all this. The superintendent is going yes, because she is our superintendent, and in 10.12, the new superintendent is allowed to go also, and I think that's a great thing. We're not on that topic yet, but I think that was great also. But I don't think everyone understood, and I shared that with the superintendent, please share that tonight, that we're transparent. So they're, they didn't see that the fiscal impact, and they said, "There's no cost." So therefore, we're just sending her there, and we're able to benefit from what comes back from there, so.
Okay.
Can I ask, since we're being transparent, is there a cost of lack of subs? Are we, are we paying for subs and stuff? Do they pay for that?
These are all people that are...
These are all 12 months.
So there's no sub.
But in general, we, with, I mean, we approve a lot of these.
Sometimes there is a cost for subs, but it should list out on Board docs if there's a sub.
Is our sub listed in Board docs? I haven't ever...
The costs are all factored in.
If there is a sub, that's a cost to the district, that's listed.
Oh, it will list a sub.
Yeah. All right. All right. I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor, 10.11, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, that's 5-0, and then we'll go to 10.12.
I recommend approval of the out-of-state leave request for myself, Diane Carnegie, Melissa Desjarlais, and Julie Robinson-Llewellyn to attend the Carnegie Education Summit on Improvement in Education on March 27 through the 30th.
All right. There's his recommendation.
The moved.
Motion by Sandy, second by Bill. Any discussion questions on that? Seeing them, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. That's 5-0. That brings us to the discussion portion of our agenda. Certainly feels like we've already done that, but 11.01, consideration of a final order. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You have in the packet the school board final order that was drafted as a result of a formal hearing that was held on October 24, 2016, before Ms. Steibender as the hearing officer. You are, the final order is pursuant to the recommended order, which was entered after the hearing. This is the time for the board's consideration of the recommended order and entry of the final order. You are not allowed to amend any of the findings of fact unless there is absolutely no evidence of a fact and that there would no possible interpretation of a fact to lead to it. You would be allowed with citation to different parts of the record or to specific laws, amend or alter the conclusions of law that were presented. So I suppose the appropriate way to proceed would be to seek a motion to accept the, or to approve the school board final order entered pursuant to the recommended order of November 18, 2016.
All right. I'm looking for such a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Bill.
Second.
Second by Kristi. Any questions, comments? Any discussion on that? All right, then I think we're ready to put it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. All right, that's 5-0.
Thank you.
Next item is tentative approval of the revisions of policy 5.80 on athletics.
Yes. Thank you very much, and this is a policy that we have. We have proposed some revisions here, and tonight is the first night you're going to have a recommendation for tentative approval. We'll need to do the public hearing. Board, let me walk you through some of the changes here. You're going to see, this, we needed to add some language because of the controlled open enrollment provision here. You're just going to see where in paragraph two, we've had FHSAA consistent with Florida statutes to provide that clarification. We wanted to, in paragraph three, provide clarification that we do have the Lake County Middle School Athletic Association that we have here in our district, in our middle schools. On the back page, or the second page, you're going to see number seven, that we're clarifying student discipline will be in accordance with the Lake County Schools' Student Code of Conduct. Number eight, it talks about student athletes, they must maintain their eligibility through the Controlled Open Enrollment and Student Assignments process, talking about homeschool and virtual school students, and then we referenced School Board Policy 5.20, which is the open, Controlled Open Enrollment Policy, and that any falsification will result in the loss of athletic eligibility for one year. So at this time, I'd like to recommend tentative approval to the revisions to Policy 5.80 Athletics.
Chairman? The matter before the board this evening is tentative approval of School Board Policy 5.80 Athletics. If there's anyone that wishes to speak to this policy revision, please come forward to the microphone at this time. I don't see anyone coming forward, Mr. Chairman. I believe it appropriate to close the public hearing.
All right. Thank you very much. There was a recommendation from the superintendent. Any motions out there?
So moved.
Motion by Stephanie, second by Bill. Any questions, comments, discussion on this policy?
Yes. Does this still allow the coach to have, you know, demerits or whatever disciplinary thing that they choose? Because it says, it references, it references the Student Code of Conduct.
Right.
So do, can coaches still choose to discipline their students within, you know, reasonable, you know, demerits or whatnot?
Right. They do need to be within the confines of the discipline policy, which is this. The Student Code of Conduct, or Code of Student Conduct is the board's policy establishing parameters. So anytime, any student, it doesn't prevent a teacher from doing their classroom management and doing their discipline. It doesn't prevent a coach from doing their discipline.
That's what I was asking.
They just need to be within the parameters that you have set as a board.
Okay. That was my question.
All right. So I think we're ready for a vote on that one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. That's 5-0. Brings us to Policy 7.40, Parent and Booster Organizations.
Yes. This is coming back for final approval. We did have this workshopped back on October 10. Mr. Gamble did have some questions about this policy, and I asked him if, because this was on discussion, I know that board members, this policy actually originated from the board with some discussion and dialogue, and we actually worked through this at the board table. So I felt like, while I remember the conversation, I did not want to speak for one board member versus another, and so instead of answering Mr. Gamble's questions from my remembrance of it, I felt like it probably was better to make sure we did that as a group, so I did not miss a representation of what a board had talked about. So in this particular one, we talked about no fundraising outside of the internal account or the approved school-related organization. So we really tightened that up quite a bit. I think the questions came from 11C. Mr. Gamble, you asked that we've stricken from the policy that language, and what was the reason for that, that we took that out? And I don't know if board members, you wanted to comment about the philosophy of why we took that out?
The reason I asked the question is because in that statement, it says, "All SROs are to be incorporated and will maintain their financial records." And then D says, "All corporate banking accounts." So if you've stricken out that they don't have to be incorporated, they're not going to have a corporate account. So why would you, my understanding, years ago, when this was all put into place, that we required all of our booster clubs to become incorporated because of different legal processes and things and everything. And I understand where some of this probably is coming from because of some problems we've had with some booster clubs over the past years about some misappropriations of some things. But that's my question, is why would you strike out that they didn't have to be incorporated if you're still even the number D in, it tells them that they have to have corporate banking accounts?
And I don't remember us taking the incorporated part out. I remember that we spoke specifically about the financial year and the dates that were being filed. I don't, we may have gotten a little overzealous with our cross-out pen.
I think you might be right on that one.
So are we, and now, this is, this has been tentatively approved, so do we need to go back? Okay, okay. So are you saying that you wanted to say, "All SROs are to be incorporated and will maintain their financial records on the same fiscal year as the school district, period?" And...
Not on the same as the school district, because there were those that did it calendar, and that was what the issue became. It wasn't, it was about, we were requiring them to do it in our format and, and based on the, on the calendar year, where most corporations are, I mean, most corporations use calendars, and we're in that fiscal year.
You would just have the language, "All SROs are to be incorporated, period."
Okay.
And then this other paragraph, and then the rest all is consistent.
Okay.
And then the part about, for me, the other thing I just read is that "should attend" the monthly. I thought it was going to be a "shall attend."
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
And then the other question was on I, and I think you were saying, "We're changing the policy on how they are to report to the principal and their financial activities. You would like to see a copy of the format we're going to make them comply with."
Right. The format that you're looking at, that they're going to have to now, you know, I mean, when I was booster president at a very high, my treasure was outstanding. And I mean, everything was there. You could see it, and there's total transparency. And anytime we would need to provide something to anybody, it was right there. Everybody could see what was needed, and we gave everybody in the meeting and the principal a copy of all this. So I'm not sure at how extent you're looking at on this, as far as what our format is with the district versus what maybe someone already has in effect. So...
I think what we were looking at when we got this, that we would gather the different, the different formats that were out there, and then decide and land on one, and everybody would use it. So I think, I think you're exactly right, Mr. Gamble. There are some schools that have a really good, clean, very efficient format, easy to read, and it gets the information that we need. And then some are minimal, and some are very extensive. And I don't think the booster clubs, you know, wanted to be handcuffed with this extensive reporting when they're doing their monthly, you know, their monthly statements and things like that. So we said we would gather them all up and come with one consistent.
With this exception, that we did say, because specifically, this language was a discussion with you and I, and it had to do with Leesburg High School. And Leesburg, within Leesburg, within their booster club, there's an umbrella of several organizations. And so that, that a reasonable compromise was that they would give us an audited monthly financial statement. So it's not going to follow a format. It's going to be, their CPA is providing it audited. So...
That should be reasonable.
It's one or the other. They have the option of...
No, but that was the, what I was doing was giving you the history, that's all.
That's right.
But not all booster clubs have CPAs.
No, this said, "or," but I was just explaining why the language came in there. That's what it was about.
So if they're going to give us their audited monthly financial statements, it's going to be in that, that audited format. And if they're not, then we will have a set format that we use and say, "This is the approved one."
What, Danz?
Information is that they won't have, CPA audits are expensive because they have...
They have it. They already have it. They met with us, they have it.
They don't want that.
No, they do want that. Okay.
All right. So it looks like we're on tentative approval.
Yes, sir.
With the changes.
I think we're looking at tentative approval with, from the form that was committed on Board docs, you're reinserting in 11C, "All SROs are to be incorporated." The rest of that language is stricken through. And then in the next paragraph, you're changing, "The school principal or designated 'should attend' to 'shall attend,' and just since we're redoing it anyway, going to renumber that paragraph to be inserted."
Cool. Dr. Moxley, is that your recommendation?
I recommend with the changes as designated by Mr. Johnson.
All right. We have a superintendent recommendation. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir. The matter before the school board this evening is the initial revisions to Policy 7.40, Parent Booster Organizations, School Support Groups, and Fundraising Activities. If there's anyone here this evening that wishes to speak to these changes to the policy, please come forward to the microphone at this time. Saying that Vance is not coming forward, I believe it appropriate to close the public hearing.
All right. Very good. We've got a recommendation from the superintendent. Any motions on it?
So moved.
Motion by Bill, second by Stephanie. All those, any questions, comments, concerns? All right. Ready for vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. That's 5-0. And that brings us to the consideration of the contract for Diane Carnegie. So I certainly have the opportunity and pleasure to work on negotiating the new contract here, using some parameters that we had previously discussed and set as a board, such as the salary, as well as the performance bonuses. I guess to provide some highlights, Mr. Johnson had sent out a memo speaking to the substantive changes there. I guess to piggyback on his memo, the one item that I'd like to point out is that in the, in the way the performance bonuses were awarded, the majority of that now shifts towards student achievement, as opposed to the leadership performance indicators. And I think that just speaks to, you know, our desire to really focus on the student achievement, and that's the job that we've hired Ms. Carnegie to do. So you'll notice the balance shifts there, as opposed to the, being divided equally. And the other item to note would be the change in the time periods for the evaluation. So that way, we define the period in which we're completing the evaluation. It aligns to the fiscal year and also would correspond conveniently enough with the end of the contract. So that defines that term, and also sets some logical dates for when the superintendent would share her goals with us and when we would receive updates on those. And, you know, the rest of the dates just kind of sort out to make logical flowing sense.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do want to point out that I corrected Ms. Burns' typo that she found in paragraph 13, where it says $14,000 in numbers and $14,500 in words, so we fixed that. And that I, everyone believe I got it, I think, because it was on Board docs, the new graph for the student performance, and I just want to make sure you understood that those numbers don't total the numbers that's in the paragraph on performance, the number of dollars, because it's in the policy that this is one of the things you're supposed to be working on before it's administered, what those numbers are going to be.
That's correct. We're not... We're not tied to what's there. And when Ms. Carnegie and I spoke about this, you know, that it might make some sense if we were to target some specific areas and really provide some focus points as opposed to just this whole glob of, you know, every student benchmark you could possibly imagine, if that's our will as a board, to concentrate on some key areas. And that would give her some direction. But certainly that is, you know, subject to negotiation going forward. That's not the one we're tied to that's on board docs. That's just what's in place currently.
Okay. So I missed your first point that you were making about how the contract changed, because it was in relation to this, right?
Yes.
Yes. So what was, how did, how did the contract change?
You were talking about the performance bonuses?
Yeah.
Okay. So previously, under, with Dr. Moxley, they had been divided 17,500 for the leadership performance indicators, and then 17,500 for student achievement. And with this, we shift to 14 and 21. 14,000 for the leadership indicators and 21,000 for student performance. So that shifts the majority of the awards available based on student achievement results.
Okay. So we're putting more emphasis on the tests.
Well, not necessarily the tests, because we haven't, we haven't decided that as a board, how we're going to determine or measure that or where we're going to put those focus points.
Okay. Can we discuss that then? Because currently.
Timeline for that is March, if I'm trying to recall.
The contract specifies that Ms. Carnegie is not being evaluated under this performance evaluation for the first six months, I believe.
Because.
And you're supposed, I think September 1st was the date that you're supposed to have come to some agreement about going forward with what the performance evaluation is for next year. So you got till now from December 1st, September 1st.
And then we, and so it's 21 for, 17% is achievement, and what's the other?
21,000.
What, sorry, what?
21,000 for achievement.
14,000 and 21,000.
And achievement is the 21. What's the other, what's the other number?
14,000.
That's the board, the board evaluation.
Just board, oh, okay, okay. Gotcha. Okay. So the achievement, and so will we be able to define more?
Yes.
Sort of nebulous achievement?
Absolutely.
Like, I don't, well, graduation rate's not terribly nebulous, but I don't think that's.
Right. We get, we, there will be some sort of negotiation, that will be a workshop thing.
And we'll decide.
Absolutely, absolutely. We don't need to decide that today. There's some timeline in the contract for by when that gets decided. Keeping in mind, you know, the first set of student achievement data that comes back, well, Ms. Carnegie had no opportunity to influence that at all. You know, she's still in her transitional phase. So really, that's why that part doesn't even really take effect for her first six months in office.
Okay.
Good questions, though. Any others? All right. Any motions out there?
I move. We accept the contract.
All right. There's a motion by Bill and a second by Sandy. No other questions. Looks like we're ready for vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right. That's five zero. Which brings us to the next item of some job descriptions for a transitional superintendent and a superintendent emeritus.
I would move that we accept the job description for superintendent emeritus.
Second.
Motion by Bill, second by Stephanie. Any questions or comments about those? All right. We need a recommendation from staff on that one?
I knew it.
Do you have to make a recommendation?
It actually needs to be a little broad, a little more in-depth than what you have given, if I may.
Okay.
This agenda item is approving both job descriptions for a transitional superintendent and superintendent emeritus, and adding them to the staffing plan so that we can, you know, place people in those positions. So it's all three parts.
All right.
Again, I move.
And I'm a second.
All right, very good.
Let's drag this out a little longer.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Ready for vote? All right. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That carries five zero. And this gets to the exciting part, the official personnel transaction that would appoint Diane Carnegie to the transitional superintendent effective January 18th, 2017.
So I'm recommending approval of the personnel transaction, appointing Diane Carnegie to the position of transitional superintendent pending all pre-employment processing.
So moved. All right. There's the recommendation. Motion by Sandy, second by Bill.
Can I ask her a very brief explanation for the public by Dr. Moxley of the, what a transitional superintendent is, but she will be called the superintendent and you will be called the superintendent emeritus, is how I read it?
So.
Could you, like, quickly, briefly?
Sure.
In the 15th or 18th?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mrs. Carnegie, when she comes on board January 18th, she will be entered into the position called transitional superintendent. I will maintain the position of superintendent until March 10th. She will assume the position of superintendent March the 11th, and I will assume the position of superintendent emeritus. During the superintendent, or the transitional superintendent, Mrs. Carnegie will start on her 100-day plan, and the job description outlines that. She will be able to do her listening and learning sessions with principals, department heads, visit schools. She will be able to establish her organizational chart. She will then identify the individuals that she would like to select to fill some of the keynote vacancies that we have. She will be bringing forth and be working on this district staffing plan. All those things will be coming into play. She will need to work on those on this point because they need to come to the board in March, and those will be hers and with you as the board. And so this gives her that lead-in time to work on all those items. I shouldn't be the one working on those because I won't be living with those. Those are hers to do. And so you're granting her, as a transitional superintendent, the time to do that without the oversight of all the day-to-day logistical things. When, but I'm under contract all the way through June 30th. And so we're allowing, through your plan, Mrs. Carnegie and I to switch places in March 10th, March 11th, where she will then have all the authority. I will no longer be the constitutional officer. I will no longer have any authority to make a recommendation or assign any documents starting March the 11th. She will have that responsibility and that authority given to her. All the bank accounts will be changed, constitutional officer, she will take her oath, all those kinds of things. And in that last period of time from my contract, I will do those projects that are outlined in my job description as superintendent emeritus. One of the things that we identified was I was going to continue to work on the SOPs with Mr. Dodd, and I've had many conversations, and nobody can ever get the time to work on those. So I will start to work on those. I will close out any of the grants that are coming to a close. I will serve at the superintendent, who happens to be Mrs. Carnegie, at her request for any assistance and support that she needs in that time as I'm transitioning out. Anything that she needs me to do, I, there are certain things that we talked about that are, that I can continue to assist with. I will participate in some of the district activities at her approval. She will be the superintendent representing the district, and I can be there as superintendent emeritus if that's agreeable. I mean, there's some things, like I've been with the students, the seniors, their whole, the last eight years, which is the bulk of their time. And so she will be the superintendent doing the top scholars luncheon, but I will able to be able to be present at those. But it will be in that capacity, so.
And does that explain it? And will be called as of the 18th.
January 18th, she will be referred to as the transitional superintendent, meaning the incoming superintendent. I will still be referred to as superintendent. May, March 10th will be the last day you'll ever refer to me as superintendent. She will then, on the 11th, she will be superintendent of schools for Lake County. I will be superintendent emeritus for Lake County.
Thank you.
For the remainder of my contract.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? I think we've got a motion and a second on the floor, so it looks like we're ready for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That carries five zero. And the biggest congratulations to you, Diane. Very nice. That brings us to one more discussion item, a discussion and consideration, the legislative liaison process.
May I interject something?
Yes, please.
I know that you're going to discuss this as superintendent, and I have one request as part of this discussion, is that as we move forward, Carol, Carol McLeod has done some review on this, and I know she's been talking, so she is available to answer questions. What we need from the board is, how much do you want to spend and what is the scope of services? That is very important, that we know what is it you're expecting this person to do so that we know, you know, what steps. So those are two items that we definitely need to. I did, for the part of your discussion, I did make copies about, well, in 2008, we had hired a lobbyist, it was a company. I did pull that contract, so you had a point of reference. I'm not saying do, actually, what I did, I'm sorry. Did I not? I think, I needed this one, you need this one. Those were my notes. I gave you a copy of the agreement for contracted services, and it's tabbed where the scope of services happens to be. And so this was just for a point of reference, so you had something to look at with that. And at this time, this was a $20,000 spend, but that was in 2008. So I wanted to give you that point of information. The other point of information you asked for was, you wanted to know where we were with the Florida School Boards Association. Their dues run from July 1st through June 30th. Your dues for this year have been paid in total. The dues were $21,596 for the entire board. And if you know in your governance model, the board is a unit. But this one part in Senate bill, or House bill, or whatever the bill was, 7029, it has the one part where you're allowed to individually determine whether you want that. In that case, if the whole board, you know, wants to be a member of FSBA, then the whole board renews. If one of you wants to not be part of it, then the dues are prorated four fifths, and that's what your dues become. So it's prorated. If all of the board and only one person wants to stay a member, they will allow you to stay a member, but when you look at the services of FSBA, you know, again, that will all be prorated. So we, you know, if, how you want to do that. Your next opportunity to determine whether all or none, or one, or two, would be sometime in the spring, because you are invoiced, oh, sometime mid-February for the next upcoming year. And you have through, you know, they're to be paid by July 1st. So you have that window of time from like March 1st to July 1st to determine whether you want to take, you know, avail yourself of the services of FSBA. And the services that they do is advocacy, training, information, they do regular publications and updates, newsletters, blog postings, research onsite, regional workshops. They are doing the, they do represent school boards as a total, but they will not advance any one particular board agenda's agenda item if it is at the demise of another. So they stay pretty close to things that benefit all districts with that. And I know we had one item that it was great for us, but it wasn't for other districts, and so they did not pick that one up. So again, I wanted you, you'd asked for that information, and I wanted to make sure you had that.
All right. And so I, you have given me some homework, and that was to touch base with our county commission to learn about what their agreement was about and what sort of benefits that had brought in. And last year, the county had spent $50,000 with Gray Robinson, and they were able to explain to me that there were projects that they thought came back to Lake County that they wouldn't have gotten otherwise. That being said, you know, they didn't really have a long relationship to be able to speak to over time, what will that look like? But in the first year, they had some initial success, there were some road projects. So then we got to talking about what our legislative priorities are, what does that look like? And most of the things on our list are ones that do benefit all 67 counties, with the exception of, well, the district cost differential. But, I mean, aside from everything else, it was solve the messed-up testing problem that we've got and increase the funding, looking at the two mills and also the base student allocation, which basically are the same as the Florida School Boards Association's priority. So I said, "Well, it sounds like we would need to be identifying more locally specific projects in order to really get anything for us." I mean, certainly, it's nice to have one more advocate speaking against testing, and you know, the firm could do that for us, but what would be the likelihood that all of a sudden, testing would change because Lake County decided to give these folks some money to do that? So really, we'd need to think about, what are some local projects that would be specific to Lake County?
I have a short list. Did you?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I worked with the superintendent's office on this short list. And so for scope, I have, in East Ridge High, there's an alternative education program in which they put children who have been, high school children who have been expelled, instead of being just expelled for the entire year, they can go to this alternative education program, and they basically can continue with their education while serving their sentence, I guess would be the best way I could explain it. Please stop me if I'm wrong. And they've been, and the county has been costing this out for Northlake. And so that would be a potential project for Northlake. And Sabrina?
I actually have an update in my.
Oh, you have an update? Okay. And then the other one would be adding.
Let me stop for just a moment. So in speaking with some folks from Gray Robinson, asking about, well, what would this look like for us if we were to partner with you? February 7th is the key day for drafting deadline, and so we wouldn't need to decide on those projects tonight. If we decide to partner with them, then we could invite them into, well, I know we've probably got a pretty jam-packed agenda on January 30th, but.
We can do.
We could probably, we could squeeze an opportunity for somebody to come in and work with us and assist us on some of those projects and kind of give us some advice and guidance and determining which ones they think would probably pan out to be most successful. So I think tonight, the target would be, do we want to move forward? How much do we want to spend? The feeling I get is that, well, you could buy a range of services, maybe you could, you know, spend, and I disclosed what we spent on FSBA last year, and I said, "I don't know if we're going to have $50,000 to cough up or not." And so the remark was made back that, well, there are services that you could buy for that price, and likewise, there'd be services you could buy for $50,000. You know, so what do we, you know, where do we land on that? And then we could certainly, if we, if we agree to that, we could invite them in and help us craft those priorities.
In my mind, and number one, this is definitely a workshop item, and so, so we can spend an awful lot of board time talking about something that really should be workshopped. That's number one. But I think that the, it was on the list for the joint meeting with the county commission that we didn't have because of the election and things got a little bit silly, I guess. But, but for us to partner with them, and then we really would have, for us to say how much it is, I'd like to know what that value, what do they think based on how much time they're going to allocate? It's probably based on time. And then I don't know how the county is looking at judging the success or failure. But with the projects, particularly like the DCD, that, to me, that fell totally flat. Benefits 53 counties. The FSBA did not get behind it for us, for whatever reason. That would be an advocacy, and that's $4.4 million right there. So is it worth 20 grand? I would say so. And the number I always looked at, because I was very disappointed in, in my four years on the board, for three of those, I've been very disappointed in the FSBA. And I've been vocal about that. So I got $21,596 that would be neutral if we went somewhere else. Now, they've got some new leadership, and I've been a little, I've been more impressed. So again, I'd like to have a workshop and really discuss the merits without just saying throw away the baby with the bathwater. But, but I also think that we ought to have some conversation with the FSBA, because we pay $21,596, and I always thought the reason that we didn't get any attention at all is because the bigger counties paid more. You would assume that? But that's not accurate. That day, Miami date is like 25,000. So why are we paying so much is the real question, in my mind. Anyway, so I would like to see us table this for a workshop and that we can get someone in. It seems natural to me that we would piggyback. That's a natural. And I don't want to make this decision in.
I'm going to invite Carol McLeod up, because we had some conversation about piggybacking on this one, and there's some insight that she'll be able to share about that.
Mark, we also have Ms. Langley from Gray Associates here.
Yes.
And Mr. Dodd, we spoke, and Dr. Burns, we spoke too. Again, this is professional services, so you're not required to bid or piggyback. You can simply enter into a contract if this is what you choose to do. Mr. Mathias, to your point about working with the county, I would ask that you outline the scope of services because while we work with the county, our priorities are significantly different than theirs. I mean, it services all of Lake County, but we, they're not going to have somebody that's going to focus on the education issues necessarily.
Excuse me, don't mean to interrupt, but by piggyback, I did not mean piggyback on their bid or their product. I meant that we're using the same resource, the same firm.
The same firm. And again, that's absolutely up to the board. We have the ability and the right to do that. And Gray Robinson, obviously, is very well-known. We've used them actually as underwriter, a different division of their firm for different things over the years. So what the board needs to do is outline your scope of services. What is it you want these folks to do for you specifically? And to your point, how much do you have and how much are you willing to spend? So that's, but as far as, yes, there is an existing contract you could piggyback, you're not required to. So you do have the flexibility to simply move forward if that is the direction and the desire of the board.
And it was my understanding, talking between Carol and Ms. Langley, that time, that we had a tighter time crunch than what you're talking about. But I don't know how that...
I think, Dr. Burns, what you're talking about are those special projects that try to get funded individually, as opposed to, or in addition to, a more global use of a lobbyist in general sense, as opposed to specific items. That's what that February deadline is for, things that go to a group in a committee in Tallahassee that works on specific items, as opposed to a more general lobbyist that would just be supporting educational items with an emphasis on Lake County.
Except for the fact that they're already in committee. People are already going up to Tallahassee right now to lobby. So...
But I think that we're, we may not be able to make this. I would rather really think this out than try and rush somebody up to Tallahassee.
Right.
I think this may be our year. Ted, it just doesn't come around every, I mean, the topics don't come around every year.
You're exactly right. In my opinion, in evaluating the trips that, I know that you've gone several times, I've gone several times, you've gone several times, that's not when the decisions are being made. They're being made in the balance of the year when the halls are quiet, and that's when we need that representation. So I have been a real advocate that we need our own advocate for Lake County. And so, but I don't know, the session has to be the big deal. That's my point.
Yeah, so, yeah, we can invite her up. Come on up.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to be real brief. There are some changes this, I'm Angie Langley, and I'm a partner, a part of the team with Gray Robinson for your consideration for this. And there are some changes this year legislatively that are brand new, that have, we have not endured in the past. And one of those is, is a new system in the House whereby any appropriation has to have a standalone filed bill, meaning anything that you're seeking money for has to have a special, separate appropriate, separately filed, standalone filed bill for that. And you have to have a House sponsor for that. That bill, those, all of those forms, all that paperwork has to be filed by February 7th. So any appropriations money, anything that you're looking at, needs to be filed before that. So we've got to get on the ball to get a House sponsor, which we don't think would be a problem because we've got a great delegation for Lake County. But time is moving, you know, committee weeks are, we already had a couple in December. We're in the middle of one this week right now. So we're ready to hit the ground running with these things. With you guys, and I would definitely, I completely agree with Mr. Mathias regarding having a workshop to do these, because I think if you were to put it with that January 30th school board meeting, first of all, you'll have a very late meeting, I would imagine. But if we could...
The January 30th is a workshop for us.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were saying that that was a regular school board meeting. But if there would be any way to potentially have a, an earlier workshop, we would be very open to any of that. So...
Yeah, typically, our workshops are at 9:30 in the morning.
Okay. I'm sorry. It's been a crazy Monday for me. So I just wanted to let you know about that because I know this is a new, a new thing going on in the House that a lot of people are not aware of. And I'm available to answer any other questions.
And I would be happy to have a workshop outside of our regular workshop date because I do think this is terribly important, if you do, Carol.
Yeah.
I'm fine with it. Can you say, this is an odd point, but as House members can generally only file six bills, does this fall within their six?
No, because this is appropriations. It's a different thing. So I'm not, they may have, I don't believe that they have a limit. I can verify that. But also, I wanted to make a point that we're not too late on this. If you were to decide on this maybe two or three weeks from now, I would say, ooh, you know, you're kind of really getting, but you're not too late to enter into an agreement to, in my opinion, have success this legislative session.
Okay. Well, I mean, certainly, we could schedule a workshop between, before January 30th to talk about these topics, if we're interested in going forward. But tonight, we would need to look at what we're going to spend on that. Or can we do that on that workshop between now and then?
I think if, you would attend, right, Angie?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so until we kind of lay out what our ideas are, how are we going to know how much it costs? I mean, so it would seem like to me that, I don't know if it's a tally cart, like you get three initiatives for 20 grand. Or, or I'd be more inclined that we pay you a bonus. If you, if you give us $4 million, we'll give you an extra 40 grand. I mean, I don't know how these...
Dr. Moxley, permission?
Just for clarification, if you're wanting to do a workshop to talk about what you would be doing for your projects or sending up, that's fine. But you, at some point, are going to have to take action on who you're hiring. And that would need to be in a meeting setting. So I don't know whether, you know, how you want to proceed with that.
But I have, I think having the benefit of Angie, who's also a citizen of the county, that she can speak to us both as that taxpayer citizen and also then as the representative of how the process works, right? You'd be cool with that. It may be wasting your time because we may go somewhere else. But you'd be good with that.
Our next meeting is the 23rd.
The next week. Now, do you want to do a workshop, you know, that day, and then do the meeting that night? Do you want to do a workshop on any other day?
I'm agreeing that we do a workshop soon, before the 23rd. If we're going to try to take and do an action on the 23rd, if we're going to make a decision, we'd have to do it on the 23rd unless we call a special meeting.
Right.
Right.
What's the 16th?
16th is Monday, but that's Martin Luther King.
It's Martin Luther King Day.
And, oh, I guess we can. Okay. How about Tuesday, then?
I can't do Tuesdays.
Oh, sorry.
All day Tuesday. Any other day, I'm good.
23rd?
Well, how about the 18th? I mean, I can, as long as it's in the day, I'm okay.
The 23rd, we do have a meeting that night.
Could we do it in the morning?
A workshop beforehand. Typically, when we've done both on the same day, we've had a late afternoon workshop. Would that be preferable?
Late and then go into board meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
That's cool.
Like, 2:00?
2:00.
On the 23rd?
And so at that, so at that workshop, if we call it a special meeting, then we can also then decide that we want to hire, who we want to hire.
Will there be enough time, Carol, to make a contract? Wait, who are you pointing at?
Looking at you.
Well, I mean, but like...
I think the question is, is that if they have a workshop that afternoon, then can they vote on something that night? We would need to take this agenda item tonight and defer it to the 23rd agenda so that there's something on the agenda for them to take action on. Is that correct? That's what I would...
Do we have an idea of a pool of potential people we're contracting with?
One.
Well, it's a very shallow pool.
If it's just with Ms. Langley's firm, then we can have a contract probably ready to go and fill in the parts about the fees and things after the meeting. If it's a possibility of two or three other...
My phone.
Oh, I'm sorry. If it's a possibility of two or three other alternatives, then that might...
I'm not prepared to, I'm not prepared to be able to say we want a company at this point. Because I don't even know how many companies even do this. So I don't know that I was expecting to do a workshop and then vote on a specific organization. That wasn't where my head was at. Sorry, Angie.
So I guess thinking about timeline, if you want to hear from other organizations, then...
That puts us into next year.
Probably so. Or, would you like, well...
Again, again, I'm perfectly happy with, with the reputation and everything I've heard. And maybe it's for one session to give us some, if we really want to try and get some initiatives out there, and we think that it makes sense, then we could do a one session. Is that ever done?
Yes.
It is? I'm good with that, then. Okay, I'm totally good with that.
All right. So it looks like we would write a contract for...
Ask Ms. Langley to send me a contract that we can look at before we go into the workshop? You still going to have a workshop?
Yeah, we're still going to have a workshop.
Oh, I definitely want a workshop. Because we don't even know how much it costs yet.
Right.
So we want...
We'll take a look at a contract before...
My expectation of the workshop would be that, that I would clearly understand how much time's going to be spent, what that looks like, how many initiatives are really reasonable, if that makes sense. And so, so we have some expectation of the time, and then what is that going to cost? And if you say, here's what you get for $20,000, then we talk about what do we get for 25. You know what I mean? Or...
I'm right there with you.
You with me on that? Yeah.
Exactly.
Right, okay.
So we're going to have a workshop on the 23rd at 9:30 in the morning?
No, 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 2:00.
2:00, 2:00 in the afternoon. And then I will take the agenda item you have tonight and place it on the 23rd. So you have an agenda item so they can take action on the approval of, of hiring a firm for lobbying efforts, some language to that effect. Is that agreeable?
At the regular meeting.
At the regular meeting, yes. Is that right?
Yes.
Pause between the two meetings long enough.
Need to draft a contract?
Yeah.
We're giving you five minutes. Seriously. You're such a baby.
All right. So that's what we'll do. That brings us from the superintendent's report. Dr. Moxley.
Okay, thank you very much. Just a couple items I just want to share with you, board members. You know, this year, on January the 3rd, we had a teacher professional development day added to the contract and I, or add to the school calendar. And I really want to thank you for that. I went around the district and got to visit a couple schools. And just to give you one example, Carver Middle School, they had their teachers design an ESET II Fall convening. They did a wonderful job, and they had rotations throughout the day. They talked about teaching is practice, not a perfection. Everyone can learn. My brain is like a muscle that grows. I'm a valued member to this learning community, and we love a challenge. And so they had different mini little sessions throughout the day, and it was fun. They celebrated teaching, and they did so much collaborative and learning. They had something on growth mindset. So I really want to give a shout out to all our schools that had really taken the time, and teachers were part of the planning. And so I wanted you to know that your investment in their professional learning was much appreciated. The other thing I wanted to point out is Learning Forward, which is the National Staff Division, the national organization for professional learning. They do, every other month, they put out a journal. And this past edition, we had a whole article. It was called Task Mastery. And it was a backward approach to designing instructional, Instruction Propels Teaching Forward. It was talking about the value of teaching learning, how it impacts student learning. And immediately, when you open up the article, we have one of our very own Tiffany Scott, who was an accelerated resource teacher at Mount Dora Middle School. She's now an assistant principal. But she starts off the whole article, and they have talked about her leadership and all throughout the whole article. So it was really nice on a national journal to have our very own highlighted in that particular perspective. Kindergarten readiness, that's Flickers and that screening. We talk about students coming into kindergarten, ready to learn and being on grade level. And Flickers is administered into the start of the school year, and all kindergarten students. And this is one of the ways that they look, and we get a readiness rate, our private providers get a readiness rate. And there's three ratings. There's proficient, there's students that are in progress and on target, and then there's the not yet, meaning they're, they're not at kindergarten readiness rate. So overall, in the overall results, Lake County had 6% of our kindergarten students that were not rated as kindergarten ready, as compared to the state average of 8%. So we well outscored the state on that by 2%. In personal social development, we had 6% not yet, compared to the state of 7%. So obviously, the lower the percentage, the better. Language and literacy, we had 7% not yet, compared to the state average of 9%. Again, so we outscored the state in that particular area. Mathematical thinking, we had 88% in the proficiency and in progress, or 12% not yet. The state was 14% not yet, or 86% at that, in progress or proficient. Scientific thinking, the same for us, compared to the state at 13% or 87%. So again, what I wanted to let you know is we have outperformed the state in every one of those categories. So we were very pleased with that information. I wanted to give you an update, and I see Julie Llewellyn is in the audience with us. A lot of conversation about the work of the program at East Ridge High School. They have been doing a lot of work, and I thought I had my sheet here, and I've seemed to misplace it. But we are running the program at, the alternative program at East Ridge High School through our logic model. And so we've, we're actually doing some evaluation. They have experienced great success there, under the leadership of Julie Llewellyn. And there are teachers assigned there, there's an administrator assigned there. And the program cost is about $333,000. They, the interesting part of it is, is that the students that are in that program, all their test scores, all of that, even though they've come from other schools, that all factors into East Ridge High School's student grade because they're actually enrolled. And they operate in the afternoon till about 8:00. And they've had success rate with the students. A lot of times, the students come in with under a 2.0 GPA on average. They're at about 2.12, 2.20, somewhere in that range. And so we are seeing where the students are, starting to build that GPA and coming up to where they have an acceptable GPA and stretching them. So it is definitely a program that we're very proud of. We want to see that continue, and probably looking at a replication at the, in the north end of the county would be very welcomed. And again, we will, we would like to have this on a workshop. I do have it tentatively slated for January the 30th, to actually roll out the information from the logic model. Julie Llewellyn will be presenting along with Dr. Doyle and Sabrina Dillon-Bangs. And we want to give you all the details. But so far, the preliminary data is, is very positive in that respect. So I wanted to kind of give you that background. Governor Scott sent this information, a letter I wanted to share with you. He has declared January 9th through the 13th as Florida First Responder Appreciation Week. And I want to highlight that when you think about the first responders, we have such a great partnership with emergency management, Tommy Carpenter and our EMS program here. We're very pleased. And I just want to take this moment to thank all our first responders, our law enforcement, our healthcare professionals, our EMTs, our paramedics, all our emergency staff at the counties and the municipalities for their hard work and their support to make sure that our schools are safe every single day. We are very fortunate here to have the commitment that we do with our first responders. And it was wonderful to have Sheriff Grinnell sworn into office at Leesburg High School. He is a graduate of Leesburg High School. He's very proud of the fact. And just by the sheer action that he wanted to be sworn in at his alma mater, because that's where he got his educational start, says a lot for Leesburg High School. And I just commend him for doing that. So I wanted to highlight that. We have a lot of activities with the Martin Luther King commemorative events. I have that chart here for you. We have a lot of students that are participating in the literary contest, which is Friday evening, January 13th. Our very own Dr. Doyle will be overseeing that there in that night. And then the parade, and we have several bands marching in the parade. And I will participate in that as well, representing the district. The other item that I wanted to share with you is that another national publication by Marzano, the research, and he produces a journal and that. And the last one that came out, Wendy Hill Middle School, was highlighted in the Marzano Research Journal for their language arts and mathematics system and that. I have one copy. You're welcome to pass it, pass it down. The other item is, I wanted to call the attention, I know, board members, you may have seen, I did submit a my word to the newspaper. They did print it, because I really wanted to talk about the graduation rate. I am pleased... I am pleased that we're back on our upward trajectory, and I want to thank our high schools and for their hard work. I specifically want to call out the Program Evaluation and Accountability Department. They worked very long and hard with our principals. Many of our principals, they went student by student and looked at their courses. They looked at everything that they're doing with that. We are looking at strategies with our students that earn certificates of completion. That's saying that they've passed all their coursework, but they didn't pass the FSA, and that's keeping them from getting a high school diploma. We are looking at some alternatives for students that get a certificate of completion because it's much better for them to have an accredited high school diploma than a certificate of completion. And so we are looking at those and piloting some work with that. I also want to recognize, when we talk about that, 78% of our, was our graduation rate, that does not mean that 22% of our students just fell off the map and are not in school. The majority of those 22% of our students are in our schools. They're taking an additional semester. But when you look at the traditional graduation rate, that is when you enter ninth grade, you have four years to complete. Well, you know, when we were all in college, and I can't speak for everyone, but I do know there are many successful people in our community and in our state, and leaders and presidents, that may have changed their major in college, and they may have taken an extra semester because they switched degrees with that. And that's okay. And they still got a degree, and they're still gainfully employed. We have some students that, for whatever reason, whatever life has thrown them, and we have high school students that have, carry a lot of baggage to school. And I know of several high school students that have had some tragedy in their life, and for that semester, they just didn't do well, or whatever reason, because of the different tragedies they experienced, and they needed that extra semester. And they have never dropped out of school, except they had one semester that they may not have passed some classes. They're back, they're not counted in that graduation rate, but yet they're earning a diploma. It's just they're taking an extra semester to do it. All our graduates at Lake Hills School, they're getting a diploma that is very, very specialized for the group of students that are at Lake Hills. And to not recognize them, I think, is just tragic. And I recognize and applaud the efforts of all our students, whether they're taking an extra semester, or whether they're at Lake Hills getting a special diploma. I think we need to recognize their accomplishments, and they are not factored into that graduation rate. And so I just wanted to take a moment, not to excuse or defend one way or the other the graduation rate. That is the statistic, that is the formula. But I want you to know, there are a lot of students in that 22% that are still in school, still doing well, and on the road to getting their high school diploma that just will never be published in that rate. So I just felt like I wanted to honor those other students. The other item that I wanted to share with you tonight is, we continue to work on our Algebra I. I mentioned that with our partnership with UPD. But we have a whole district action plan that we have been working on from day one this year. Our curriculum department, our teaching and learning, every single department in our district office is working to support raising up Algebra I and eighth-grade mathematics. That was a real key area for us. We have teams going out into the schools, walking with our high school principals. Our high school principals are well on board. In fact, Wednesday, there's a meeting with UPD, looking at our classroom walkthroughs, looking at the pedagogy, looking at where we are with instruction with that. And so I just wanted to just communicate that to you. I hope you all saw that Senator Simmons has put forth a bill talking about testing and assessment. I hope he gets some traction. I'm not sure whether he will or not, but that's one of those committees that's going on right now. He has filed it, and I applaud his efforts because it's talking about getting back to really looking at what we do with assessment. Again, I don't know where he will sign on with that. And I did want to call your attention to the fact that we did send some letters of condolence, and one of them went to retired Superintendent Jerry Smith and his family, and then to the family of Charles Lennon, who is the husband of Carl Lennon, food service manager at Fruitland Park. And that's all I have to share tonight.
Thank you for sharing.
Mm-hmm.
Go down the line for Board Member Comments. Cindy?
First of all, tomorrow night, or tomorrow afternoon, at the South Lake Education, is anyone else going to that?
Yes.
Do you think they advertised it?
Has been, the South Lake Chamber Education Committee meeting.
That's in the afternoon?
It's at 4:30?
Yeah. Are you all going?
Well, I had planned on it, but if it's going to cause a conflict...
Mr. Gary, are you going?
Yeah, normally on the liaison. They had requested that the new board members come, and I think the email had said, if you were interested in going, then also contact Natalie to notice it.
Again, as long as you're not belaboring something, you can go in and introduce yourself, if that's what they want.
When you're there, in an abundance of caution, while you're there giving your introduction, I'll step out.
There you go.
And I was, my intention was perhaps to go next month. I have a conflict this month.
Okay. And we, we'll have that one noticed, but I won't be in the room at the time. Go with that.
So we'll notice it.
Right.
You want that noticed?
Yeah, you're definitely going to be able to go to the next one?
I probably would need to ask them when it is. Like, is it, will...
Second Tuesday, 4:30, yeah. Unless there's some strange holiday, but...
That's Valentine's Day, but yeah. I could do that.
That's a strange holiday.
Strangely, it's all...
We'll notice it.
Okay, very good.
Okay, and I just want to say, Triangle Elementary has a, I think it's a hydroponics garden, and they were in a magazine, and I had it at the last meeting we had in December, but because of the essence of time, and I won't go into it any further tonight, but they were in that magazine and talking about their garden and everything over there. Also, if I'm not mistaken, Oak Park has something similar over there, because I know I would go in their gate and there to the back, and their garden would be there on the left. So, but it's great that our school was recognized, and also brought out in the article how some of the vegetables that they raise in there and that they use in their salad bar area there at the school. So, I mean, that was great that they were recognized. I've been to quite a few schools in my area, some outside my area, visiting and introducing myself to principals that I may not know, and they may not know me, but they do now. And, but like I say, I'm just trying to get out and be visible. As I made a comment before, I'm not just a diocese board member. I'll be out there, and I don't know where someone said eight hours a week for a board member was all there is, because since I've been a board, there's been a whole lot more.
There has.
So, but I appreciate the opportunity to serve.
Very good. Thank you. Kristi?
Yes, I wanted to welcome Ms. Carnegie as our new superintendent. Thank you, or congratulations, not thank you. I look forward to working with you. I also wanted to say, I don't know if Ms. West is here. I don't think so. There you are. I wanted to say thank you for working on that, the good image software that we approved, and thank you for getting those changes made so that we could get it passed. And, oh, and I wanted to point out, this is more businessy, but every time, like, every single time we meet, we approve expulsions. And that East Ridge program that we're talking about, I called Sabrina today and I talked with her, and the expulsions, here I have three. These are the ones from this week. There was like nine. And, but there's two from Yuma Tilla and one from Mount Dora, and these kids don't necessarily have homes. So if they're from South Lake, they go to the East Ridge program. If they're middle school, high school, they go to the Lake Academy, which is with live stream. But if they're in high school, they just don't really have a home, and they maybe can get to ALI, but ALI is very small. So that program, I think, I just think it's one of the, I think it's, could be a really important program for North Lake. And then I also wanted to send my condolences to Jerry and Patty Smith, who, Jerry Smith helped me on my campaign. And my family's known his family forever. So God bless. Thank you.
I want to thank Ms. Hernandez. You did a great job. I also want to recognize Mr. McHugh, who, are you here for moral support? Did you, there you go. And Mr. Vincent, and then always, Ms. Franklin, you're always welcome to be with us. Tonight, at Board Member Comments, there was a statement about perception and transparency. And I just want to, now, this is going to piggyback off your eight hours that we spend. The board docs that are presented to us as the district goes about its business, there's attached detail that, for me personally, I go through every single contract and every single page. Now, I miss things, and so I appreciate when Vance, that you call attention, or in the social media calls attention, and that the proper approach is for us to explore these issues outside of spending three hours here, and that we get answers or we get things pulled, and that's the, in my mind, is how I serve this district. That I don't think we need a workshop on paint and painting supplies, and we can look at that, and we expect to have purchasing that does a competent job. And so those items that need to be worked shop, that are important, that I'm very proud to say that we do, and that 90% of the questions that can be answered can be answered offline. And I don't know about you, other board members, but they assigned me a district person. I think, I think Dr. Doyle drew the small straw and got me. But there is a reach-out contact to say, do you have questions about the agenda? Do we need to do some research for you? So we're informed when we come up here and vote, is my point, and that to imply anything else is just nonsense. So that's all I have.
Steph?
Thank you. I did have some notes from the Central Florida School Board Coalition meeting today. Before I get into that, though, I did want to let you guys know, and I am new to Lake Legislative Days in regards to being on from the beginning. So the first year I went, it was piggyback on yours. This is the first year that I've set it up by myself and been the legislative contact. So you can all go. That's something that every elected official in Lake County can attend. The registration closes on January 15th. It's $75 to go. You can book a hotel room. They have a block of rooms reserved at the Doubletree, and there's another hotel also. It's all on the website. You pay for that yourself when you register online. So all of you are more than welcome to go to Tallahassee with Lake Legislative Days. There's a nice luncheon they do. We do the meetings. We schedule the meetings. I schedule the meetings because I'm an education person. But you can all go to the meetings with us. We can break up. We go to different meetings if we have conflicts and so forth. I am pretty diligent about going to the committee chairs and making sure those are the people that we get the appointments with, and we also obviously go and visit our local legislators as well, which this year Jennifer Sullivan is on some of the education committees in the House. So we get a dual agenda there. I also wanted to let you all know that you can also come to the Central Florida School Board Coalition meeting. So I was sitting there today, and again, this is the end of my first year as the representative for that, but Seminole County, I think I wrote it down, Seminole County had four board members and their superintendent present. Orange County had three board members, four lawyers, four lawyers were there, two from Orange County, not that we're in that running by any means. But anyway, right? Come on, come with me, Steve. You guys are more than welcome to come. Dr. Moxley and I usually attend together, but if you want to go, it is a very helpful meeting. As a matter of fact, when you, when we talk about the Florida School Board Association, I think that the Central Florida School Board Coalition is more beneficial because it's more local, it's more centralized to what our needs are here in Central Florida. And to continue the lobbyist conversation, their initiatives mirror our initiatives as well. So it's a really good organization. So you're all more than welcome. They are noticed already. Natalie notices those meetings already, so you're more than welcome to attend those as well. I will bring up some of the other things that they brought about, because one of the things we spoke about today was rebranding. More of education as a nation has become under fire. It's very negative. It's very easy to attack. And some of the things that we can do as a district to help communicate our efforts, but then even more to support our employees and support our staff and support our students. So I would like to have an opportunity to talk about some of that stuff at a later date, for sure. I did want to also give a shout out to the Youth to Service League. Youth to Service League is a pretty discreet group of women, and majority of the funding that we raise goes to scholarships or grants for teachers and students. But they did a really, really nice Christmas gathering for the students at Youth to Solemnary School, under the direction of Lori Baker. So specifically, her and the members of the Youth to Service League, because they did bring Christmas to a lot of families, so.
For our special meeting on the 23rd or the workshop, I couldn't imagine we're going to spend three hours on the one topic. Do you want some time there?
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah. How many minutes do you need to draft that contract, Steve? And I'll just take the rest. Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be long. Sure.
So let's go ahead and add that to the agenda for the 23rd.
Be great.
Thank you. And I think I have one event to share, and that's coming up on Thursday, January 19th. The North Lake Tea Party is putting together a What's Next for Lake County, and there is representatives from all sorts of forms of government there, between the sheriff, the supervisor of elections, the county commissioner will be represented, and I'll be there to represent the school board. So it's a great opportunity for citizens to go out and hear from, you know, all sorts of gambits of government here in Lake County. It's on Thursday, January 19th at 7:00 PM. I sent it to Natalie, so she'll notice that for us. If anybody else wants to attend, you'll have that opportunity. And with that, any other questions or comments? Any objections to adjourning? Then we are adjourned.